Calling to order the meeting of the Pittsboro Board of Commissioners from Monday, June 27th to 2022. As is our custom, we'll begin our meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you. Commissioner Farrell, would you lead us in the pledge? The United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberatory and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have the agenda before you. Is there a motion to either approve the agenda or to modify it in any way?
Make a motion to approve?
It's made a motion to approve. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Farrell. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Are those approved? Are those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Citizens Matters, we have our manager, Chris Kennedy, making our first update. Chris, would you take it from here?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. A few updates for y'all this evening. First, we have some agenda adjustments that were made earlier today. Just want to alert the public to those. The town website has got the most up-to-date version of the agenda. But we've added an item for miscellaneous number one. We have a project status update from Chatham Park Investors on some of their latest development. Updates and statuses there. We have added a, two items of miscellaneous. One is a letter to DEQ requesting additional loan proceeds as part of our SRF funding for the Pittsburgh wastewater improvements project. That project has kind of commonly been known as the Sanford Forest Main Project, even though it does include the Forest Main and upgraded our plant, converting it to basically a larger pump. And we've added an item number three there, someone who related vein, which is a board discussion regarding designation as a distressed unit, as classified by the state of North Carolina. So Mayor Perry and I were in receipt of a letter provided to the town late last week. And so I do not expect any action. Certainly, the board is always welcome to take action if it's so choose to do so, but tonight's item is now to discuss this letter, what we know about it so far, and to discuss next steps. And those are the extent of the updates to the agenda for this evening. Well, beyond that, we continue to have really good progress on our water treatment plant with the Fast Track GAG project. I spoke with Representative CDM Smith today. We are still expecting a July delivery of that project. As the board was alerted a few weeks back, we had some issues in supply chain with the pumps that were going to be supplied for that. I got word today upon request of a status that we will have one of the two pumps delivered in July. So we should be able to operate the plant with that. Certainly, a lot of times when you're dealing with water treatment, there's some redundancy in the engineering design. So we still expect probably a September delivery of the second pump, but we, based on the schedule as we know it, and again, July is just a few days away. So we should have that deliver that project in the month of July. So really excited to have that done and bring that forward. In addition to that, I spoke with Evan Diamond and the folks at the marketplace. We understand that there'll be some, probably some days where the plant's up and running and maybe having to attend to certain things, particularly if that pump comes in later than we think. So he and I discussed extending that agreement to provide water at the Chatham Marketplace until Labor Day. So we understand some folks, we're certainly going to work through Mr. Sawyer, Public Information Officer, and put information out about where that plant's at. The GAG vessel were delivered last week. You can see them from the road. It's hard to miss a 14 by 28 foot tank and two of them beside of each other. But that's really exciting to see, you know, most utility work is subterranean and sometimes you don't get the full extent of what's going on. But seeing those GAK tanks delivered via crane and seeing them stood up out there has been, been really fantastic to see that come together. So again, even though we hope to have that project delivered in July, we're looking to extend that out with the Chatham Marketplace until Labor Day, and then we'll adjust accordingly. So I'll be keeping that in my updates as we move forward to make sure folks understand where we're at with that. And really, all that is, is to make sure that the Chatham Marketplace isn't getting hit with undue demand of people coming in with tanks. They fill up a five gallon jug, they go to the cash register and find out the town's not paying for it anymore. I don't want someone to feel compelled with that. So we'll try to push out both ends of that. And the other update I have for y'all this evening is simply, just a reminder, as we approach July, the Board of Commissioners only has one meeting in the month of July. So after this evening, unless a special meeting is called, the next regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners will be July 25th. So just want to alert the public to that, particularly as you, as folks track agendas and, and look for items, particularly for those that may have a potential being continued and pushed forward to the next regular scheduled meeting in July 25th. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you very much. As far as my updates and concerns and my position on the Climate Change Advisory Committee for the county, I didn't miss the last climate change committee meeting because I was at the beach and had a wonderful time at the beach. Pittsboro is a very small town and you don't expect to run into Pittsburgh people elsewhere. Beach. And I'm here to say that I ran into two people from Pittsburgh, either yelled out the window or came by on the boardwalk of the Marina and at Beaufort and, and oh, look. So, so it was a very pleasant time away and as, and, and then I came back and got my second booster for COVID and became incapacitated for the next 48 hours. So I'm, I have no updates or concerns. I'm just grateful to be here. Mayor Perry?
I actually do not have any additional updates. Basically, we did have Prime J Council of Governments meeting. That was just for the executive committee. Primarily, we evaluated the performance of the executive director. So basically, it was a very short meeting, but it was a good meeting.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Barnes?
I have no updates.
Commissioner Phil?
Unfortunately, I missed the PBA meeting last two weeks ago, so I don't have anything to report.
Commissioner Ship?
Sure. On Thursday, June 16th, we had the Federal Housing Advisory Committee meeting and had a report from Rebuilding Together, the Triangle. That was a continuation of reports that that group has funded, or the county has funded based on recommendations. Rebuilding Together helps people in their homes stay in their homes. And they said the waiting list just in Chatham County is 150 homes for that, for their service. The people have to earn below 65% of AMI and own the building and the land. So that can be difficult for some people to qualify. And we had a good discussion particularly about mobile homes and how that ownership model is, can be difficult for them to work with. So a good discussion there, good update from them. On Friday, June 17th, went to the Pittsburgh Gallery of Art opening with the son of mayor there.
That's right.
And then Wednesday was the EDC meeting that Commissioner Boz covered for me, so he'll cover that. We are trying to get a special meeting in July set up with Greensboro Board and staff. So we're trying to figure out a date for that to talk with them. And then in terms of other updates, I learned today that there's no cost for automatic bank drafts for your water bill, so you don't have to be late like I was this month. And appreciate that knowledge and getting me set up with that. And for concerns, just the, the trash at Night Farm Community Park, those, those cans get really full, I imagine, from birthday parties and things on Saturdays. So Saturday evening, Sunday morning, the, the trash cans are overflowing and blowing around and things like that. There's not, there's no dumpster there. There's no other cans. And I think people will be, I don't think we need staff necessarily to do that, but I think people will be willing to put trash in a can or a dumpster type if it was available, particularly from the parties and pizza boxes don't fit in those and things like that. So just something to continually improve there.
Yeah. If I may on that one, I think the conversations, I know Katie's been working a lot with the folks at Chatham Park. Obviously, we've, we've talked extensively about the splash pad and its mechanical features and trying to improve those. And it's really some user habits of the park. And so trash goes the same way. It's some user habits. I know in the past, we talked about receptacles out there. And so Katie's on the call right now, so I'm sure she's listening and taking note of that. So I'll work with her and we'll see what we can do with Chatham Park and expect that we'll have something. And I think you're correct. I think when we have the events there, when you go out there and you see a, you know, a box that says, you know, 50 hamburgers, I don't expect someone just, you know, hitting the grill up out there during the splash pad and just, you know, being that grill master. Maybe there is, but I presume it's probably with some of these events. So probably something we can add to the, to the forums there about being cognizant of that. There's a note about some trash cans being added out there, so.
Okay. Excellent.
Anything else, Mr. Ship?
No, that's all.
Do yours.
June 14th, I was able to meet with the Arts Council for the first time. It was more of, of an informal celebration than it was an actual meeting. So I don't have a whole lot to report to that other than we met and I'm looking forward to having things to say in the future. Tarco has not met since we, our last meeting. And as Commissioner Ship said, I did sit in on the EDC meeting on June 22nd. I have some notes on that, but they are, they fail. So I'm rewriting those. I'll have those out tomorrow, as we talked about earlier. So sorry about that, but they're coming.
Comments or concerns?
Not for me.
Right. Now, we have signed up for the public comment period this evening. And so we will now proceed to the consent agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is, or a motion that would modify that consent agenda. There are five items on our consent agenda tonight. Motion to approve. Mayor Phil Baldwin has made the motion. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Vos. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. To miscellaneous item number one, Chatham Park project updates. And Chris, were you going to do an intro or do we call on Chuck Smith and Vanessa?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, normally when you step, stand up for the, one of the first things you say is, it's really good to be with you. This is just a normal greeting. It's really good to be with you. I mean, it's been a while, regardless of what we've all been going through. It's funny, I was sitting over there thinking about that. It's really good to be with you. So thank you for allowing us to take a few minutes. This is a little different from what we normally do. Normally, when we're with you, it's, you know, we're, we're talking about business. We're talking about working out agreements. We're talking, we're asking what things you're approving. This is more of an update of what, more of who we are at Chatham Park than what we are doing, I would say. It's not about the facts of and the business of Chatham Park, but this is more about our vision and our goals and who we are. And we, you know, it's not something we've talked about with y'all a lot. And so we wanted to just spend a few minutes doing that in the form of a video. And then what we would like to do is maybe come back quarterly and get more specific on some of the things you'll see in this, or maybe some things that you would like us to come back and talk about. But that's the purpose of tonight. So I'll get on the way and let the video play up and told that the lights could be dimmed maybe, but you could see videos a little better if you're out to speak is the case, but I'm not sure about that. Yep.
I'm sorry. Vanessa momentarily forgot Jenkins. And so pardon me for, for that. Whatever.
You may have to act it out, Chuck.
Well, Chris is doing that. One more thing that I'll mention is that after this is over, if you have any questions, we can address this. But we've also got something for each of you that's, that ties in to what you're going to be seeing in the, in our video. Maybe.
Commissioner Farrell just volunteered to assist.
You need some of the mic.
All right. It's now pointing on the large screen. Is that active? I brought the Flash Drive backup just in case. Does it come off the network? So. Let your chin on the sparrow. Is it on there?
Just like he was. However, you would normally share if you were completely removed, which you're not doing here. If you were completely removed, it's still not going out right now. The only thing is very narrow. Can you leave that for the rest of the house?
I think mute the microphone on your. Just mute the Zoom microphone.
Yeah, I can't. Because of this problem, I can't.
Well, Terry, your computer should be on, but your Zoom machine's muted.
Yes.
So you want to.
Right. That's not the right thing. I'll send for a second. It's not changing. Am I good?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure sounds.
Sorry, I stopped here. Don't say that.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
I like you. But I thought he's too. Turn it on. And say, what about? Turn that off.
Welcome and thank you to Mayor Perry, Chris Kennedy, the Board of Commissioners, and the Town of Pittsburgh staff and employees. We appreciate this opportunity to show you all that is happening now in Pittsburgh in the Chatham Park development. We begin our update by looking at how Chatham Park is fulfilling the commitments that were made to develop with the innovative processes and sustainability that our elements provide. These elements can be seen in practice in Chatham Park. Here in the vineyards, we see the integration of storm water management into the median on Wendover Parkway. At our office building, an inverted roof captures rainwater and has the ability to store it in an underground cistern. All of our storm control measures are built to exceed the minimum standards required, and many of them are hidden in plain sight. An example of this is our tree wells along Russet Run that filter runoff directly from the street before it moves on in the storm water system. These tree wells are also planted with native plants, another element of Chatham Park. These native plants are more drought tolerant and prevent the planting of invasive, non-native plant species. Speaking of native plants, we even have a native plant pollinator garden at our pollination station at the. station at the Water Recovery Center. This state-of-the-art wastewater treatment facility produces reclaimed water and is one of the most advanced of its kind in the country. This facility will also supply reclaimed water to 3M south of town and meet the current and future demands of reclaimed water in Chatham Park. Just out of sight and in Chatham Park off Moncur Pittsburgh Road, the Stratus Tinker Farm is quietly producing power for the Pittsburgh grid.
Tinker is five megawatts AC, which is it is about seven megawatts DC, which is seven million watts. So that's enough power for, as you know, just over 700 homes.
Bailey's Academy is now open, the first school site to be donated in Chatham Park. Enrollment was well over 100 children before they even opened their doors, and those students spent most of the school year commuting to a campus in Cary while this one was under construction. The Pittsburgh Fire Department helped kick off the celebration of the opening of their campus in Pittsburgh. The Night Farm Community Park continues to stay busy, and the splash pad opened for its second season this May. Surrounded by multimodal greenways, the park connects to the network of wide paved trails in the vineyards. We have already built over two and one-half miles of greenways towards our goal of at least 30 miles of greenways and trails in Chatham Park. Our goal is that no residence should ever be more than a five-minute walk to a park or recreational amenity. If walking is not your thing, Chatham Park will have transit stops located throughout the development. The first one built is located behind the event lawn at Mosaic. This ties into our overall transportation plan that includes investments in bridges and thoroughfares to keep traffic evenly distributed around Pittsburgh. We even upgraded intersections and roads around Chatham Park, like our investment in Charger Boulevard, and upgrading the traffic control measures on 15501. We have also invested in the town's water system with a 300,000-gallon water storage tank that we built several years ago in preparation for the coming growth. We are also building homes to a higher standard with our Eco Select Plus program, which requires an independent third-party inspection to the energy efficiency and build quality of the home in Chatham Park. We are also pre-wiring our homes for solar and EV charging so homeowners can easily add those systems in the future. With night sky-friendly lighting, evening walks on the greenways won't wash out the moon and stars, and our neighborhood entrance signs are all backlit to reduce their night sky impact. Our commitment to public art continues to grow, and every new area of Chatham Park showcases local art from professional artists to showing off talent from Northwood High School. Even commercial building designs feature art in their architecture. Even before our Chatham Park affordable housing elements were approved, we were working on ways to make sure affordable housing wasn't restricted to specific locations. Our cottage homes sit right in the heart of the vineyards, surrounded by greenways, parks, and a school, and market-rate housing. These 800 to 1400 square foot homes sold out quickly, and we are working on more designs to meet our element, including workforce housing units right in the heart of Mosaic. In the North Village, Chatham Park is continuing to work with the Town of Pittsburgh in our commitment to provide 7.5% of the project as affordable and workforce housing. We are currently working with affordable housing builders to break ground on our first apartment complex within the next year. Speaking of Mosaic, the new Hampton Inn and Suites has broken ground. While Chatham County has had its share of motels and motor lodges, there is nothing in Chatham County like this 78,500-square-foot full-service hotel with 120 rooms and plans to showcase local Chatham County artists and its decor. This hotel is also a great benefit to the Chatham County Agricultural Center by providing lodging for larger, long-term events at that facility. Mosaic has kicked off its year of events on the Tommy Edwards stage, and this summer, you and your family will be able to enjoy free concerts, movie nights, and other activities on the amazingly comfortable turf grass event lawn. Building I is fully leased, and Greek Cuisine is finally open in its new home. Building I will also be temporary home to 79 Degrees West while construction continues on Building H. Refuel is open, not only with fuel, but grab-and-go snacks.
Guild, which is the first urban-style apartments built in Chatham County.
The Guild will include 165 apartments, a pool, and covered parking. In Building H, the tesser at Mosaic condominiums are sold out, and Hobson Berry Tap Room is under construction. The self-serve, pay-by-the-ounce tap room will be the first of its kind in the area.
79 Degree West, which is the name of our co-working innovation hub, and 79 Degree West is the longitude between Chapel Hill and Pittsburgh.
UNC Health Urgent Care and Rheumatology is open, and Building F is home to a variety of tenants with a new People's Coffee and Oya Cantina now under construction. Northwood Landing is preparing for new tenants, including Los Foods, Zaxby's, a full-service car wash, and future plans include more retail parcels and a 312-unit apartment complex. This 92-acre site sits just south of Northwood High School. In the vineyards at Chatham Park, we begin our tour at Barnaby, the American Home Study Concept Home. This home was built by Garment in only 60 days during a pandemic and with supply chain issues. This concept home was nationally recognized in trade publications and made national news and is right here in Pittsburgh. Stop by and take a tour to learn more. As of June 2022, there have been a total of 219 homes sold in Chatham Park out of the 556 lots that have been sold to local and national builders. Coming soon in Chatham Park, the Chatham Park Commerce Center is a light industrial area off Uvans Road near the Water Recovery Center and Business 64. We are now pre-leasing our 71,000-square-foot Phase One building. Just north of the 64 bypass on Chatham Parkway is the North Village Town Center, home to residential and commercial offerings and locations for a YMCA are being planned. Much like downtown Pittsburgh, this area is designed to have a small-town feel. The Innovation District encompasses the area on Chatham Parkway in between Business 64 and the 64 bypass. This area will be home to future medical and corporate campuses and technology-based businesses. We can't finish this update without showing you what all the buzz is about in Chatham Park. Our pollination stations are active and growing, and our small workforce of honeybees are serving the community with their propensity to pollinate. Master Beekeeper Jody Moore of Rocky River Bees is overseeing the care of over 300,000 honeybees in Chatham Park and also providing guidance on creating habitats for other native pollinators. Mosaic added our second pollination station this spring, and these horizontal hives are not only a work of art, but they will help increase pollinator coverage in and around Chatham Park. We've done several podcast episodes about the bees in Chatham Park, so be sure to check out the Chatham Park podcast for more information.
Thank you for allowing us to do that. We're not going to spend any more time, but we do have the whole honeybee and pollination thing. Kyle and I were joking about a little bit, but at the same time, to us is very serious. And if you understand what's going on with our food production issues in the world, this is an important statement we're trying to make. One out of every three bites of food you eat comes because these guys are doing their jobs, and we've from our first batch of honey that has been created at Chatham Park, we've all got some samples and gifts for y'all of our honey. So.
That's what harvested.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, wonderful. Thank you.
Appreciate that very much.
It's gorgeous.
Thank you very much. And. That's the pollination area there at the recovery center. Where is the other one? There's another one in the North Village. Is it?
It's at the north entrance going into Mosaic off of 15501. We've taken that area between 15501 and their development that has all the existing trees and located a few of our houses there.
Okay, great.
Moving on. Thanks, Jake.
Any other questions by the board? Then that brings us to new business, the first of which is the approval of the town's sponsorship of Summerfest 2022. Chris Kennedy?
Yes, ma'am. What we have here is, we talked a little bit about this in the past, some of the budget items as well, is we staff is looking to bring some formality to some of the requests that are that are asked of staff when it comes to special events. We have a little bit of policy in terms of how special events should be operated. The Board adopted an ordinance in 2019, but in terms of other resources the town may provide, there's there's very little guidance from a policy perspective. And as you might imagine, most folks deem their their event or their request to be of utmost significance to the town. And so knowing that Summerfest is kind of a ubiquitously liked event, and I fully anticipate a vote to sponsor this event, I've kind of wanted to test this out with this particular event here, if you will, and and really almost prompt this for what will become a better fee schedule for the for the town as we look at these special events. So when we look at something like Summerfest, Pittsburgh Association has hosted this for several years now, there's quite a bit of staff demand in order to support this. So we worked with the police department, both Chief Johnson and our community police officer Sam Bradburn, anticipating 97 man-hours to operate Summerfest. And when you when you have events like this, those generate overtime. We're pretty lean. We're fully staffed, thank goodness, not calling all the wood in here. But still, where our shift works out, there's very little extraneous time in someone's two-week timesheet. So it's very rare that we won't be paying time and a half on any time there's a special event that occurs. So and that's for the full gamut of the of the force there. So from, you know, the rookie, so to speak, to the most senior tenured of our staff. For the Summerfest in particular, they've also asked for access to our town water on the site, asked for access to town electricity on the site. We had a recent request for hoses to actually hook up the water to some of the amenities at the event. They've asked for trash, which trash includes would then bring in the public work staff to handle that. So there are a number of things here. So as the memo suggests, we're anticipating somewhere between $3,000 and $5,000 in terms of expense. Forward, as we have events and obviously we have investments in cones and barricades and other types of infrastructure, I think it's it's it should be expected there's some sort of cost recovery. I'm not saying that we're suggesting that we we buy a barricade every time there's an event, but eventually there's a natural wear and tear on these items. And if they are specifically for special events, I think there's some some consideration to recoup some of those costs over time so we can replace that infrastructure so we have proper equipment. So simply for for this one, as much as is a prompt, and one is to say, when someone comes to the town and asks for this, again, on behalf of staff, I'm looking for guidance from the board about whether you have an interest in basically a sponsorship of this. We still have indemnification of most of these events. Again, it's on town property for this one in particular, they're blocking town street. So we were going to have our proper indemnity forms there. But in terms of overall sponsoring the event, we understand that the PBA historically has not desired to go spend five grand on on having this support. That's why they asked for it. So you have a budget this year in your 4100 department. There's $32,000 that is in that that budget for the board to consider items like this this year. And so what we would do for this one in particular is if the board's willing, and I expect the board to vote in favor of this, obviously don't let me speak for you, that we would then, you know, hold the event, approve everything, and then at our meeting in July, we would reconcile this with the budget amendment. And so we would, we would figure out, okay, how much were those costs, were those things? And what we would do is move money out of the 4100 department, which is the board's departmental budget, and move that to the police salary line item, to the po-work salary line item. Some of the costs will somewhat evaporate, if you will. We don't have, I know what it calls to replace a cone or a barricade, but we haven't developed a fee schedule there yet. So that one probably won't be incorporated into that budget amendment, but I think it's using this as somewhat of a template to build towards that. And then that way we have a better understanding of what our expense is and supporting these events. We have a number of really great events here in town. That's that's a great positive thing. But I think there's also some some good marketing of this to say, hey, the town is involved in this. When you see an event happen and you see it's hosted by, you know, so-and-so, you know, organization, the town does contribute, not only in terms of planning that event in many ways, but as well as actually helping support that event financially. So no attempt here to accept too much credit. That's not, that's not the business we're in. We certainly like to work under the radar more. But in order to have a procedure in place so we can turn down the other organizations that we may not wish to support, I'll allow your mind to take you wherever you think that organization may be, and it may not be one that we're customarily associated with. But to differentiate between that and say, Chris, we're good with this one, but for that event, I don't think we can support that. I think this will be helpful towards putting more structure to the policy overall. So that's the premise of it. Again, Summerfest and the PBA, they've been good. I appreciate their patience in working with us on this. There's been some training wheels of sorts that we both had to work through, and it's really been kind of a two-year process of working towards some of these things, working through some of the kinks. And I think we've done a good job of having the events and certainly appreciative to folks like PBA of getting events executed. But I think we'll all be better off with clarity moving forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have, or emotions, just as sufficient.
It's a question that I have. This with as many organizations as we have supporting merchants in town, how do we make sure we're distributing town funds fairly?
I think part of that is understanding where your budget is, and that's what I think brings some intentionality to this of saying, if someone wants to host an event and we're anticipating that it's going to be three to five grand, if if you have $32,000 in your budget, you kind of, you can, you know, kind of deduce that down saying, okay, well, if we have two of those, we're plenty good. But you start having five, six, seven of these events, you start saying, man, we're, we need probably be more cognizant of how we're we're sponsoring this type of stuff. Again, there's also the opportunities to where we split cost. There, you know, they ask for certain items where say, we'll cover this if y'all can cover that. There's some of that there, too. But just like any other entity that would contribute or a donor, they're they're acting as a sponsor. You know, if you know, the beer garden is sponsored by so-and-so, there's credit due with that. And if we're spending this amount of money, we'll be one of the main sponsors of any of the events in town. That's a lot of money.
I think, too, that's part of what the Downtown Advisory Board will do for us, I believe, is, you know, bring bring these requests and kind of go through them and look a little further out to this. Obviously, a new process for us. I think it'd be helpful to have a sort of application and menu of services. I wouldn't have thought of, you know, the hoses for the water or something. So if that's something we want to do, we can say, you know, this is it. This is what the cost is. And then, like you were getting at, to have the, you know, how much are you requesting the town to share of this cost? That may be 50%, that may be 100%, maybe zero.
Right.
But and of course, the sooner we can get those applications in for the year, the But in, of course, the sooner we can get those applications in for the year, the better. We can also project, you know, our cost.
I think a lot of the events we'll have will be, you know, kind of recurring. You know, you think about, you know, the local on main event, they got moved this year, but it could happen again. We've got Pepperfest, we've got Summerfest, we've got the street fair, which is moving to Rotary, running that event. Obviously, easy to say that, you know, the Christmas parade will be covered by the town. But those are types of the events that you look at and start deducing, okay, how much are we spending on these events? This one in particular is going to work a little bit backwards because we're going to do the budgeting after the fact. What our hope is, is to have that better fee schedule presented to the board. I'm of the opinion that things are often, policies better created when you're in the heat of it. You know, this isn't, you know, a life or death thing. So I think as we go through it, if, if we, if we weren't asking for an event and we were just adopting a policy, I think the questions would be there, but maybe less sharp than they are when you actually think about an individual event. And so what I'm hoping is with this one, kind of that retroactive kind of debriefing of it in terms of the costs and the expense, will help us create a better policy so that way as we work with future applicants, we understand what the projected costs are in advance. Because I can, I can talk with, you know, Officer Bradburn or Chief Johnson and say, okay, how many man hours do you think we're going to have on this? And they say, okay, we're going to have fifty. Okay, we can work with applicant and say, hey, we're, we're anticipating to operate this event safely. We need fifty hours of, of police power injected into this. This is what that cost is going to be. And so working with that, I think we will have a more proactive approach as we move forward. And this, I think it'll be more, more clear for everybody, which is, which is the goal.
I don't have a question to make, just comment, Chris. With this event, and I apologize to the PBA for missing the meeting last month. But question I have is with this event, and I know the vendors that would have come into the Summerfest versus the vendors that come to the Fall Fest. I believe the vendors at Fall Fest, they pay for their spot or booth. But in this event, a lot of these people that are invited, the jugglers, the, you know, the hula hooping and the bubble ring. They're not being charged by PBA to come, are they?
I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
And, and that's where part of this is, is, is basically we are sponsoring a portion of it, basically the town related expenses and not covering jugglers and balloon bouncy houses and other types of things. It's just infrastructure that we would be, you know, maybe best equipped to handle.
Guess what I was getting at is the, the Fall Street Fair is a little more of a moneymaker for the people that are setting the booths up versus the Fourth of July celebration and a celebration and fun, you know, activities. So, I mean, I support it a hundred percent.
And that could factor in a decision to potentially sponsor. You know, if we come forward with, with the next one of these, which our hope would be, is that we're well in advance of the event. But we have an idea of what the setup's going to be. Our application right now talks about, you know, certain events are, you know, sixty days in advance, thirty days in advance, hundred and twenty days in advance. Looking at those, making sure those numbers are still adequate and coming to the board in advance. And you say, well, you know, this is more of a, an event where people are just here to enjoy themselves. It's not, it's not a moneymaking, it's not a market. It's not a flea market, it's not a farmer's market where there's some sort of vendor relationship. That may affect your willingness to support it a hundred percent. Do you say, well, if it's, if, if there's a, a moneymaking proprietary thing on the other side, then, you know, town's not interested at all, or only interested to a certain percentage of what our costs would be? I think, I think those are the conversations we, we'd like to have moving forward. And I think as those recurring events happen, you know, your precedent is, will be set over time. But you're always allowed to, to change your mind and refine it for sure. Yes, sir. Thank you for your question or comment.
Just adding on to that, I think the, the cost for participants for the event could be part of the application to, if, you know, because we may want to sponsor some participants that may not be able to participate otherwise if there's a fee or something like that.
Yeah, right now that's application fee seventy five dollars to apply for a special event. And I can tell you, we, we, we lose a lot on that application.
Sure.
Well, judging from the estimate of three to five thousand dollars in town expenses, I, I think it's, this one is pretty clearly into my recollection, what some, so far what has been described, this will not involve closure of the highway.
Correct.
Because that'd be, as I recall, an additional six thousand or more.
But DOT is expensive. And that's one of the things too, right now, we don't charge a fee to close a town road. We don't charge a fee for the town hall lot. I think those are, those are considerations I think we should, should look at in terms of developing a fee schedule of, you know, when, when we give exclusive use of that lot, basically we shut it down. Our police officer will be out there at midnight on the day before to ensure that lots clear for a good event. So it's not just the hours of the event, it's, it's the preparation for that. When we give that exclusive use of a public good of sorts, I think there's, there's some consideration with that. And then some maybe potential financial consideration with that. I don't think it'll be as expensive as the DOT is, certainly. But I think there's, there's probably a, because there's different demand. When you close a road, it involves cones and barricades and police officers that would otherwise be necessitated.
I appreciate the thrust of this and I very much appreciate where staff are coming from on it. And I, I think the messages will, will support it. But I'm, I'm also eager to have us ease into this. So the community organizations that are probably still just recovering from a two-year hiatus on physical gatherings and getting back into the saddle, if you will, of, of organizing these kinds of events. I, I would want them to be surprised by this because organizing events is, is a high risk effort. And in many cases, pretty low return. So I, I'd like to think about this rather than a three to six month phase in the learning process over the next year, the entire community is made very, very aware that this is coming into play. But things like charging for the space, I would hope that we would wait some time for that, those kinds of things. Acknowledging that, that it, it may need to be coming.
And, and with like any proposal that comes from the board, if I present a fee schedule of sorts, you, you don't have to adopt it a hundred percent. You know, you can cherry pick that if you wish. Our employee expense is going to be there regardless.
That's right.
But that one's pretty immovable. But in terms of charging for the space, charging for roads, you know, things of that nature, that can be something as we consider next year's, you know, fiscal year budget for twenty three, twenty four, which seems like a Jetson year. But, you know, those are things as we, as we continue with this role. And, and surely so, we're going to find some kinks in this. And, you know, I remember, I met with, I remember the day precisely, I met with Greg Lewis on December fifteenth of last year and talked about this when we started talking about some of these things. And so I, I, again, I appreciate their patience as we kind of work through this. But I really do believe this, that is some structure, this provides clarity for everyone.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, I certainly agree with that, what you said, Mr. Kennedy. So basically I do appreciate you putting this on here in terms of the Summerfest. But again, Pittsboro doesn't do fireworks. So this is in lieu of July fourth celebration to say. So if there's not any additional comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sponsorship for the PBA Summerfest twenty twenty two.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Baldwin, seconded by Commissioner Bonnetts. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next is our termination and release agreement with Main Street Pittsburgh. And so are you ready?
Mayor Perry, I'll, I'll provide a brief overview of that. This is the kind of official separation document with Main Street Pittsburgh. I've included a brief memo in your packet that includes not only the termination release services agreement, also include the original services agreement with Main Street Pittsburgh for your better context and information. And so what we've tried to do is show you the two documents in juxtaposition of one another. And what this document from Main Street Pittsburgh is seeking to do is to eliminate any perceived gray area in basically how we release each other of requirements of the agreement. And so this document is in front of the board for your consideration. The board, in my opinion, is not required to adopt this. It is simply a voluntary agreement. I think it would provide greater clarity to adopt it or adopt some version of it. But it's basically essentially right now an offer from Main Street Pittsburgh. That board has voted on this to recommend that these are the terms of termination and release. But the board commissioners may differ with that and wish to alter the, the terms of the agreement or simply not adopt it at all. I know myself and Commissioner Shipper are actually on the Main Street Pittsburgh boards. So if Commissioner Ship has any comments there, and I, and I do believe that Maria, Greg and Michael from the board as well are on the Zoom. If the board has any questions for representatives of Main Street Pittsburgh.
Yeah, I, I think the only comment I really have, obviously worked with Main Street Pittsburgh to develop this, is that it, it sort of flips the ownership of documents as compared to the original agreement. And that the, the termination agreement says that they will retain all documents and then the town is able to request any documents from them. So I would just ask staff to request all of the documents from them. I don't know that it's really critical who retains ownership at the end of the, the day of them. But I would just request that we do ask for all those documents that, that they say that we can have if we ask them in the termination agreement.
Any other questions? Motion?
I'm sorry, there was one other had to do with the, the language when I first reviewed this. Very small change. Main Street Pittsburgh was specifically called out as, I'll, I'll use the phrase proprietary or somehow that, that there were restrictions on the use of that phrase. There was an omission of MSPBO. And I think that that should be included as well because it's so often used instead of Main Street Pittsburgh. Okay, with the board. Agreeable?
Sure. Yeah, I, I don't know that there would be any objection. I certainly allowed the, the parties who are going to remain on that board. Because there, as you can see in the document, they're changing the name anyhow.
Right.
So we've got, you know, the, they're transferring us, you know, the social media accounts. It's a, there's probably a MSPBO hashtag or something. So that may be implied, but probably best to go ahead and explicitly state.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy, that's exactly what I was intending.
And I believe that those parties are, this has attendees. I, I mean, I would simply say, because, because there's not a, there's not a quorum of Main Street Pittsburgh on the call to the best of my knowledge, so they wouldn't be able to, to authorize on the fly. There's not a delegated liaison. So I think the board would just simply say, if, if there's a motion to that, just a condition to, to accept that or they can choose to. Just an MSPBO acronym.
Just not such that they accruals. Should not be a problem.
Yeah, I think what Mr. Mas was pointing out is there's a, there's a reference saying that anything that refers to Main Street Pittsburgh would not be retained. But I'm going to attorney your own, own attorney and say that it, use the term MSPBO as an acronym. So we'll just clarify that.
Based on that.
Yes.
So that, that we'll, we'll consider that amendment to section eight to include that in terms of, since from, from farm and after termination date, MSPBO shall not use any corporate name, service mark or trademark that includes the phrase Main Street Pittsburgh. And what was put for MSPBO.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is, is a motion appropriate at this point? Are there other matters to discuss?
I'll make a motion to approve for that amendment.
Motion made by Commissioner Ship.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bonnetts. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. As opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. At this point then, we'll go into a series of public hearings. There are two on the agenda for tonight. First of which is a special use permit, quasi judicial hearing. The explanation for which is that when land, when a land use is permitted as a special use, the governing board already has made a legislative decision to allow that special use, provided that the applicant shows standards, that approval set by the ordinance will be met. Quasi judicial development decisions are based on standards in the ordinance, but the standards inherently involve some judgment and discretion. So in order to make a quasi judicial decision, the board must hold an evidentiary hearing. Witnesses are sworn in, testimony must be focused on the relative, relevant facts. And the parties must have legal standing to make certain actions. But witnesses may be required by certain matters. Board may not rely on lay witness's opinions for technical matters like traffic projections and property valuations. Board must base its decision on the evidence in the record and the standards as required in the ordinance. So if, if an applicant has provided facts to show that they meet the applicable standards, and if the opponents have only provided general opinion or fears without factual support, then the board is obligated to approve the applicant's request. Petitioner, opponents and Board of Commissioners may cross examine witnesses and may object to evidence that is not material and or irrelevant. So at this point, town clerk, interim town clerk wishes to find out if there are persons interested in testifying in this matter. I would turn the matter over to him.
Thank you. Sign up sheet out that was outside the room has no names listed on the testify. But themselves, I'm sure it is going to testify. Witnesses inside. Okay, well, would you all stand?
That's right here, next.
Would you raise your hand, please? And do you swear or affirm that you will tell, testify and tell the truth in this matter now before us to see?
So witnesses have been sworn and we will then continue with the hearing. But I have a motion for to go into this quasi judicial special use permit hearing. By Mayor Pro Tim Baldwin, seconded by Commissioner Vos. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Before opening the hearing, do any board members need to be recused? A basis for being A basis for being recused from participation in a quasi judicial hearing include, but are not limited to, financial interest with the applicant, close familial or business relationships. Please also indicate if there has been an ex parte communication involving this case. If an objection is raised to a member's participation and that member does not recuse themselves, the remaining members shall by majority vote rule on the objection. So does anyone need to recuse themselves or make a statement of self-interest? No? No. In that case, we will then proceed with the, with the hearing, asking if the staff wishes to present the request.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. We go ahead and share my screen. You want me to share? Thank you. Oh, still disabled. All right. Good evening, everyone. So the applicant and property owner, Roca Forte, are requesting a special use permit for the use of the cemetery on parcel six eight five seven one, which is a total of eleven point six one acres. It's located at one three six five NC nine oh two highway, and the property is within the town of Pittsburgh ETJ. For consistency with the land use plan, the requested, the requested S U P is compatible with the medium density residential land use classification. And it's also going on the property with an existing principal use of a place of worship. As far as consistency with the comprehensive transportation plan, bike and pet and the parks and rec, those are not applicable in this case for the nature of the use. With special use permits. They are also required to meet specific findings. And section ten point four point ten point L, the special use permit review standards, there are five standards to meet. Number one, the proposed special use will not material materially endanger the public health or safety. The applicant is proposing the location of the site to exceed minimum perimeter buffer requirements along the closest adjacent property line, which is parcel six one eight seven three. The required buffer type C is required and must have a width of fifteen feet to twenty feet, dependent on the option selected. And there's a twenty six foot setback proposed along this property line. This finding is met. Number two, the proposed special use complies with all requirements of this ordinance, including all regulations and standards generally applicable within the zoning district and specifically applicable to the particular type of use. Due to the low intensity of the proposed additional use, this finding is met. Number three, the proposed special use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property or as a public necessity. The current owner of the adjoining property closest to the proposed cemetery is Pittsburgh Pittsburgh Baptist Church. Both properties are over ten acres, providing enough of a buffer to this proposed use. This finding is met. The number four, the proposed special use is generally in harmony with the intensity scale and character of development existing or planned in the surrounding area. The place of worship is existing and the location of the cemetery has been designed to maintain the harmony of the property. This finding is met. And number five, the proposed special use is generally consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan and any other plans officially adopted by the town Board of Commissioners. This finding is met due to the nature and intensity of the use of the cemetery on a property with an established use of place of worship. There are standard conditions and the one proposed additional condition is in lieu of a zoning certificate compliance, because there's nothing for planning to necessarily review with the zoning compliance of the cemetery. They will be required to get erosion control, which is actually where the applicant has started. And so before that permit can be issued, they need the special use permit approved. So they've gone through the steps. And planning staff does not see any issue with the request. The applicant is here if you have any questions for them, and I'm available for any questions as well.
Thank you. The board have any questions to staff? If not, then perhaps we could hear from the applicant. Delighted to hear you at this time.
Thank you.
Could you state your name and address, please?
First of all, I'm all this. And I'm sorry, what else?
Your address for the record.
My physical address? Okay, I'm sorry. Fifty Pittsburgh Elementary School Road.
Okay, can you speak into the mic, please? Speak into the mic.
Sorry, Pittsburgh, all of all this, and it's fifty Pittsburgh Elementary School Road. And I'm actually a standby for our church because our pastor is in a Sabbath week. So but this project is something that, due to COVID, as we know, a lot of, a lot of us lost family members and our church does not have a cemetery. So even before COVID started, we started the process, but due to COVID, you know, we lost a lot of family members. And also there was a little, the process for the cemetery, I guess. Not a lot of people asked for the cemetery. So it was kind of like a little hard to get like where the starting point was, but thankfully we got it squared out and everything. So our hope is for y'all to approve it so we can have something for the church. Did y'all have any questions?
It's an unusual request in a sense. And so, so I guess it's unusual for us as well. So questions?
Any questions, maybe just a comment. Was the Pittsburgh Baptist Church, are they aware of this cemetery proposal? That work?
Yes.
Okay.
We sent letters out. And we had two of the adjoining properties come to our meeting and they were very supportive.
Right. I do know Mr. Carroll also. Yeah, he spoke, he spoke in favor of that to myself, but just curious, because you know, you hear a lot about the Baptist Church is going to move out of town, you know, they're running out of space and all that kids. So I didn't just making sure that they're aware of this.
Too that Steve Carroll had attended your meeting and had given his support for it. So I do know him and it was, it was very nice of him to.
Yes, it was.
To be able to attend that. Questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any opponents to the request? Obviously not, since they did not stand to take the oath. Therefore, we're ready to discuss the matter. We should go out of public hearing at this point. So is there a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
By Commissioner Ship. Seconded by Commissioner Vos. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. As opposed. The vote is unanimous. And so now we'll entertain a motion. Discussion and a motion to approve the permit. Or we could have more discussion.
We made a motion for discussion.
Okay, we could have a motion to pass the second, the special use permit, or we could discuss it further.
Madam Mayor, there is a resolution approving the application.
In your pack.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution approving the application for a special use permit.
Thank you, Commissioner Ship. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Bonnetts. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. As opposed, motion carries unanimously. All good. Thank you so much. Also going to take a look at tonight for public hearing purposes, a code of ordinances for Pittsburgh Minimum Housing Code developed by our town attorney, Paul Messick. So we would need a motion to go into hearing number two for that code of ordinances amendment.
So moved.
By Commissioner Bonnetts. Seconded by Commissioner Vos. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. As opposed, motion carries unanimously. How would we like to lead this discussion? Would we like, Paul Messick, would you like to lead that for us or Chris Kennedy?
Madam Mayor, what I was going to simply offer, the board reviewed this several meetings ago.
Yes.
We don't have anyone signed up to speak.
Yes.
For this evening, and I haven't received any written comments or any other verbal comments about the proposal. So I presume that the public is, has reviewed it, is okay with it, you know, maybe a dangerous assumption. But the, we haven't heard anything. So rather than going through the proposal here, simply would just offer that Mr. Messick or myself are happy to answer any questions you may have. If you, if you've developed questions over time, if not, I think we can proceed forward. One thing I would add is that you'll notice that the ordinance to adopt this has a little bit of peculiarity to it. We're looking right now as the board is aware, it may be a newer item for Commissioner Vos and you, Madam Mayor, looking to reformat and redo our code of ordinances. We've been working on that for probably about eighteen months now and are hoping to have a more formal document for you as early as potentially next meeting. And so that is where Mr. Messick has given us a look ahead of chapter one fifty. That's what that refers to. So if you look at the, the numeration of our existing code, one fifty would seem very far advanced from where it would typically be under the building section. So what we've, we've done is we can simply adopt this as it's presented and it will carry forward in both. It'll be basically reconciled and corrected in terms of the numeration. Once we adopt the American legal version of the code, which we hope is maybe as early as next meeting. So if there was any question about where the number seemed a little bit off, I just wanted to clarify that. Other than that, I think the boards reviewed this in detail. And again, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
I actually had some questions. The properties that I'm greatly concerned about, I think that was a motivating factor for the development of this minimum housing code, was the Deacon property also known as the. Property on Phil's Bro Street. Thank you so much, Commissioner Farrell. And. And it's hard for me to understand whether that would be considered out of this ordinance as residential or non-residential, because we did rezone the property several years ago. And yet, nothing has been done. What's that? The bringing to fruition, any change on that property? So I guess, because there was some language about. If a property is in a historic district. There might be additional steps that needed to be taken. And I was just wondering if the Deacon property at this time would be considered non-residential or residential?
Well, I would say from a, from a use perspective, I would say the property has been rezoned to commercial. And so the way non-conformities work, generally there's a provision of time with occupancy of that, where, you know, someone's presumed to be grandfather or whatever it may be. Any amount of time would have extinguished that. So it's just simply a structure now that in my opinion would be considered commercial.
Okay. And, you know, there are a series of time periods within this ordinance with certain things being done within ten days, others within ninety, you know, notice periods. And I'm assuming, Mr. Messick, that, that those are either statutory in nature or they are reflected in other ordinances of towns that are somewhat our own size and situation.
Yes, ma'am. If you think they're too short, then obviously the board can make them longer.
And not at all. I think it would be the reverse.
Okay, we can probably do that too.
I noticed that one provision was the condemnation of an unsafe property could be closed, could be dealt with after it had been closed or unoccupied for two years. And, and after that, the board could act to condemn that property. And I guess my question was, that property has, that particular property, Deacon property, has not been operated for, for at least two years. But, but the housing code that we are going to adopt would not have been in place. Therefore, would we have to wait two years or could we go ahead and condemn it?
The ordinance would be effective in the sense to adopt.
We'd have to wait the two years after that.
I don't, I don't know where the two years comes from, but no, you don't wait two years for that.
Oh, good. Okay. Page ten, there was a. A discussion of penalties. In respect to lodging. Structures. And the first penalty was a thousand dollars per day, and it was a hundred dollars thereafter. And I was wondering, was that? Is it indeed our intention to, to charge a hundred dollar, a thousand dollars for the first violation and, or was it?
Eggs and apples and oranges. The page ten is dealing with residential structures.
Okay.
Beacon being a non-residential structure.
That's, okay, thank you. Okay.
Was that your question in better style? Was that generic question?
It was really more a question of whether that was an error or not. Should it have been a hundred?
Intentional.
I guess maybe if I may infer, why wouldn't it be a thousand dollars a day? Or why doesn't it escalate to a higher number? I think that's your question, man.
Because there are two different things. One is a lodging establishment like a motel, house, dwelling, individual houses.
Okay.
That's one. We, we can change that, but that's the logic.
Okay. That's my questions. Are there any other questions from the board?
I guess just to talk about the Deacon property specifically more, which is a particular high sore and unsafe. I guess my hopeful legal interpretation of that was that it was previously a home. It was rezoned, but it is still allowed, like residential use is still allowed. So I didn't think that that would change because nothing has been done to the property since it was rezoned and it's still allowed use what its previous use was.
Well. So, so you're, you're interpreting that because the, the current zoning ordinance allows residential?
Correct. And obviously, nothing has been done to the property, any improvements since the time that it was residential. It's still allowed. I don't see how that.
Yeah, I mean.
Change.
It was my understanding, and again, I don't have the zoning file in front of me. So if a residential use is allowed and it was a residential structure, I think I could, I think I could go with that. But any claim that it's a, it's a non-permitted use and would be non-conforming and legal non-conforming, they wouldn't have a claim to that now. It would either have to be permitted and therefore the structure doesn't have a. They wouldn't have a claim to that now. It would either have to be permitted and therefore the structure doesn't have a change of use applied to it. And a change of use is different from a rezoning. I mean, there's gonna be significant upgrades either way. You know, I don't suspect someone's gonna be leasing that for residential or commercial anytime soon without a substantial outfit. So I think it would just depend on what it's, and likely be, be some information from that, the property owner at the time of saying, okay, what was the most recent use of this property? And as you get into these minimum housing things, enforcement, particularly with any code enforcement. You start jumping into the legal realm of affidavits, you know, records, you know, how, how's the property appraised? Is it appraised as commercial or appraised as residential? You know, there's a lot of factors that go into deducing what the actual use is. But again, it was my understanding that it was rezoned commercial. But if that zoning district allows residential, then I think there might be some, some latitude there to say it's still residential.
And I think it's mostly whether we enforce under one fifty, one hundred or one fifty, two hundred. The most important thing is that we enforce tomorrow morning, whichever section we use, so.
Right. And, and again, the, the fines are opposite compelling factor for anything. And generally, your commercial uses are gonna carry a higher penalty. Because, you know, there, there are certain types of businesses and I won't even elaborate or, or give an example, for a hundred dollars a day, they'll just pay it. And then you have to seek some sort of other injunctive relief to say, hey, you are harming the public, because that's what we're saying. Is, you know, we're granted the authority to adopt something like this to promote the health sector in front of the public. So if it's anything against that, regardless of what the fine is, we would seek some sort of relief through the courts to make sure it didn't continue. If we had to. We try to avoid that, but.
I think those of us that have been around for a while would remember that it had been a rooming house. And in very loose terminology, shall we say. It was, it was not used as a personal residence so much as it was a rooming house. Which is a residential use. So.
Bed and breakfast is not residential.
Well, at the, at the time I inquired about it in twenty fifteen, I believe, I was told that it was a permitted use in residence, in a residential area, so.
I, I will offer this a little bit of jest. One of us was licensed in Central Carolina to practice drill, said, oh, and
So noted. So, any further questions?
I do have one quick question in reference to that same particular property you're discussing. Say, you may say that that's a historic home.
It is a historic district, but the house itself is not historic.
It's not historic.
It has not been placed on the historic register.
Okay.
So, so even if there's a property that's, that's in some historic classification or designation, if you will. And I'm speaking intentionally generic. The only powers really we would have is that we could delay demolition. And, and those are only for three hundred and fifty-five days. So, so even if it's a, the, the best of projects, we want to retain it and it's perfectly well-kept and someone wants to bulldoze it and put a hotel there, you know, we can only delay it for three hundred and fifty-five days. And that's only to, if you have that, that actual jurisdiction to do so. So it does provide some of that. I think that's where we wanted to try to work with Mr. Deacon on that property. Understanding, you know, there's, if there's a designation applied to the property, there's advantages for that. Particularly, companies I've had with him have been more aligned in with restoration and not some sort of renovation for complete overhaul. Obviously, the zoning has conditions applied to it with the, the facades, what the appearance of the structure looks like. And kind of the aesthetic performance. So that's, that's beholden to the zoning itself, but there's also other opportunities. And, and again, there's probably a litany of excuses between building materials and code red and all sorts of things that have delayed that. But we, we hope to have some more positive things. And if this helps us push that forward, I think it'll give us a little more in trying to get that done.
Okay, thank you. One other quick question. I did say it's just one, but I had to. The other question is, say, if, if this particular home was condemned or whatever. And he may say, oh, there's another one in Pittsburgh just as bad as this. What, what are you all going to do?
I'm gonna say, thank you, Mr. Deacon, for filing that official report. We'll be happy to look into it.
So I got you first.
Okay. So that means be first, okay.
And to give you an example too, of, of what would happen is, you know, this would, I think would be very rare. But part of going through these minimum housing things is eventually ensuring performance. And that may include the town paying demo the structure. Or paying to, rehab the structure to, to maintain safety. Now, for us, we're not gonna renovate it or restore it. It might be us tacking plywood over the windows. But we would then put a lien on the property, recover our costs and expense to do that, to make, to ensure safety. So we would have that in our, in our ability to do so as well. But yeah, that, that's usually how code enforcement works. You know, I'm sure Chief Johnson, you know, when we pull people and they say, well, someone's always speeding faster than I was.
Will the owner of the property receive notice that this code is, has been passed by the, by the board?
I think they will because we'll send them a note that's actually utilizing this ordinance as much as anything. And like, like we have with other things, you know, the first year really of going through this code enforcement, a lot of it's education. You know, what, what most people don't understand, when we levy penalties, we don't get the money. That money goes to the school system. So when we set a civil penalty to someone, and whether it's a hundred dollars a day, a thousand dollars a day, a billion dollars a day. That money is recruited by the town and then that is then sent to the school system. So it, it's not, it's not a money-making venture for us. We want to ensure safety.
Absolutely.
I'll just make a quick comment regarding Pam. There is more than one property that, that need attention in Pittsburgh and this, I'm well with this ordinance. And I like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrell. And seconded by Commissionership. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. As opposed, happily, that is passed by unanimous decision.
And if I may, I'll just add one other thing in that I'm pretty sure that, Mr. Kennedy, you were speaking to this as you described your conversations with the property owner. But from my recollection, it is that the original rezoning was based in the condition that they would try to renovate or restore the property. If not, then they would rebuild in a similar fashion.
I believe that's correct. I don't have file in front of me, but I believe that's the kind of terms of the
The elevations of the building are part of the zoning district.
Right, thank you.
And that house is a contributing structure to the Pittsburgh Historic District. So it's qualified for all those benefits.
The owner has also been trying to get historic preservation assistance with respect to the renovation of the house. But unfortunately, some, some indications are that it's past restoration. Having been given by some professional people in the community. Well, now I think we'd be in a position of out of our public hearing. Remember where we are.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
So we made a motion during the hearing. Yes, Mr. Farrell, to amend his motion to close public hearing and approve.
Thank you. Mr. Farrell, would you do that?
So moved.
And since you seconded, and we'll vote again then. This is a modified motion to go out of public hearing number two and to vote affirmatively on the Code of Ordinances amendment. So please indicate by saying aye. As opposed, motion carries. We just got a little too excited, Cindy. Miscellaneous number two, we have five items received for information only. But Chris Kennedy, would you walk us through those?
Yes, ma'am. The first item we have, and I'll defer very quickly to Mr. Charlie Davis with the Root and Company. Staff has been working with Root and for, for several years now on the Pittsburgh wastewater improvements project. And the board has received periodic updates from myself on this project, but we felt like it would be good to she has it in her slide deck. To kind of have, have Charlie come with us tonight and present to the board. Well, we're hitting some, some good milestone marks right now. Obviously, we're, we're behind schedule. There's no positive spin I could put on that to say we're behind schedule. But what we want to look to show the board and present to the board and really the public at large is kind of where things stand. Obviously, we've had, we have a lot of conversations with this board about utilities. Sanford Forest Main is probably our most famous project, if you will. And so I thought having Charlie here tonight to provide a brief presentation, some time we're looking at moving forward. And then just any conversation that the board may have. Again, there's nothing to vote on with this particular item. It's just for your information. First, Miss, you're trying to connect to our server. That's where all these presentations and files are, are on our X drive at the town. Sometimes I can't. For preparing a short presentation. Soundframe by technical difficulties in Orion. You can see the bar at the top. We're just
It's on the public website too, right?
Yes, I mean, the board actually has it in front of them. It's on the town website.
Say, it might be easier to get from there.
So Mayor Perry, members of the board, other staff from the town of Pittsburgh. Again, my name is Charlie Davis and I really appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight. Also with me tonight, but on Zoom, is Carl Sharp from our office. Both Carl and I have been integrally involved in this project from its inception. So we are working hard for you to move this project ahead. And as part of the presentation tonight, I'd like to just kind of focus on three things. Do a brief look back of what's happened over the last year. Talk about the change that has happened in the project over that year. And then take us from where we are today and move us forward to construction and completion of the project. So before you the, we have a timeline here, a brief, brief look back. And just an acronym that's on that first July bullet. NCDWI stands for Division of Water Infrastructure. And they are the funding agency that's providing the loan for the project. They issued approval to bid or advertise for bidding back in July of twenty-one. We immediately moved in August to advertising of the project and trying to move toward construction and bidding. In September, two items to note there for your attention. Several of the contractors suggested that we consider breaking out the pipe. And just to give you a little bit of an idea, we have a fourteen, I mean, about a fifteen mile force main that's heading from Pittsburgh to Sanford. So it's a very lengthy linear project. And because of that, it's just coupled at the time we were advertising this project. There was a storm that came through the middle part of the US that pretty much wiped out a lot of the PVC manufacturers, the raw materials. I wouldn't say wiped them out. That was probably misnomer, but impacted their ability to have product, deliver product. And it was suggested that the way to hopefully mitigate pricing and control costs to, to the town was to break it out. So we created its own bid package in the midst of the bidding process to, to give hopefully a competitive advantage for cost. The other bullet there, the main thing to take away is there was some change in developers working with some of the properties down in the southern part of the, of the corridor. And you're gonna see, you're gonna see a, a map here in a minute that'll kind of talk about this a little bit clearer. But there was discussion of alignment change brought up and in the midst of while we were bidding the project. Moving to October, we did receive only one bid for the pipe procurement. And unfortunately, that really didn't give us a competitive advantage, but we did have a bid in hand. We did receive bids for the pump station, which is located at the treatment plant itself. And we were not able to get bids received for the force main portion, which is the linear part that runs from Pittsburgh down to Sanford. As a result of that, and considering that there may be a project change, the town decided to reject all bids. And we firmly assisted with that. And then with the idea to talk about the project change and how that may come about. And then also look to maybe have this project come back out a few months later and hopefully a more conducive climate to, from cost and from a bidding standpoint. And so, starting in December, we started diligently working on what we're calling the reroute of the project. And you'll see in a moment from the map. And then the, the February action that I want to just point out real clear, clearly. The town has an interlocal agreement between the town and Sanford. And while it does not specifically identify the point of connection of where the wastewater is being transmitted. The state did require a letter from Sanford indicating that if a change was gonna be suggested, Sanford needed to provide a letter of concurrence. And so we actually worked with the city on that, received that letter in February. And then that led us to March, being able to submit an amendment to the engineering report and environmental information document that had been submitted to the state. We were able to submit a revision to that and, and present that along with revised plans of the alignment change that I'm gonna show you in a second. And then June of this year, just earlier, a couple, a couple of weeks ago, we received and responded to comments related to both of those items that are allowing it to now move forward. And I'll explain that a little bit further in a moment. But next slide, slide please. So this, this, and this is the southernmost reach of our project. And I, I put it in your package tonight because it, it, it talks about, or it really clearly shows the change in the project that we have gone through. And it's hard to see, but the, the line that kind of cuts right across the middle is the CSX Railroad. And that line that's being highlighted And that line that's being highlighted there, orange or kind of dark brown, is the original alignment that this project was permitted and bid originally. It goes and connects directly to Sanford, the Big Buffalo Wastewater Treatment Plant. The area in green, it's hard to see, and I apologize for that. That is part of the original alignment as it comes down 15501, kind of diverges around a commercial area and then crosses the CSX Railroad. But what we looked at for the formal route change was to pick up the line as it crossed the CSX Railroad. And then instead of going to the west, we would go to the east over to the Little Buffalo Pump Station, which is a large pump station that the city of Sanford owns. And then, so that is the impetus of all of the work that we've been doing from the beginning of the year up to now, making this change and making sure that we could get permits in hand to allow for that change. Just to give you an idea of scale, that difference in alignment change is roughly about a mile savings in pipe, which is good because that's going to help with cost. It is provides for better alignment for accessibility of town staff to access, operate, maintain that facility because it's really more closer to 15501 than having to go across country route there. And then honestly, it offers a very simpler connection to the city of Sanford's collection system by tying in at their pump station. So this, this change precipitated through development projected in Lee Brick and Tow area that is, that is changing hands really has shown some benefits other than, other than it's delayed the project to an extent. However, if you'll move to the next slide. I'm glad to say that I'm here to provide you information of where we are today and where we're moving from this point forward. So still looking in June, DWI submitted the Fonzie. That is a finding and no significant impact. The state did require an evaluation and opened the Fonzie back up for this project, which is environmentally related. And they actually submitted it to the Clearinghouse on June 23rd. So late last week, it was able to, to occur. And so that process has started, and that is about a six to eight month, excuse me, six to eight week process that we have shown in the schedule. Hopefully, late August, early September, we are looking to get Fonzie issuance and approval to move this project forward. In between that time in July, and then it may run into August a little bit. As I mentioned earlier, we were required to amend some of the projects, or excuse me, some of the permits for the project to get some, because of the amended alignment. We've worked with various agencies to, to move that process ahead, and we should be receiving all of those last permits that are needed to substantiate the change. So in September, the idea is once we get the Fonzie, we should be clear to go back to advertisement and bidding, which is what we're going to be suggesting we do. The schedule from October moving forward is what we project, you know, once we receive the DWI Fonzie concurrence. So receiving bids in October, LGC, Local Government Commission approval. Hopefully, we'll come sooner than January, but just knowing the process and what may be required related to funding, we put a January timeline on that. Hitting that milestone, we should be able to move to commencing with executing contracts in February and starting construction in March of next year, which is an ideal time as we're coming right out of the winter and moving right into the spring and getting forward. As you can see on the timeline, we jumped from 23 now to 2024. And predominantly, the first two components of the contract relate to construction of the pump station and construction of the force main itself. Both of those right now are a 15 month timeline. They're coupled together. So if you look projecting forward, that would mean that we would look to have the, the pump station and force main portion complete and operational by July of 24. And then there are improvements, as Mr. Kennedy mentioned, at the plant that have to happen once we're able to put the pump station enforcement in line. And basically, we would be looking to complete construction in December of 2024. So, next slide, please, ma'am. So we've been working with the town throughout this period to, as we go through this, this next round of bidding, how can we prep ourselves to maximize some cost reduction items in this era of, you know, high dollar market that we're seeing? And so we've worked with the town. These are, they're three or four key areas that we've worked with. Working on blasting, there's a lot of rock in this area. And contractors have asked that if we can work with the town, and we did allow blasting, it gives them a different needs and methods of how to construct, which could be more cost effective in the long run. And so the town worked with us on allowing that to be changed, and we have changed that in the bidding documents. This second bullet is allowing an alternate pipe. And the reason that that's been done is because, as I mentioned earlier, the cost of PVC pipe is the highest that it has ever been. And it does not appear that it is dropping related to any of the issues that we see in the market and related to delivery and availability. So ductile iron pipe is an alternative, but it does require a special lining to give us that same corrosion resistance that we have with PVC. And so we've worked with the town, and we think that what it'll do is hopefully give a competitive bidding advantage because originally those two pipe materials were cost, the ductile was higher than the PVC. Now they're pretty close in price. As, as a benefit to the town, we believe it's best to give a competitive bidding environment since now they're closer in price. So by doing that, and the other benefits of allowing that material to come in is contractors have told us that we have certain segments of the line where we, and forgive me, this is getting a little technical, but we have to use restraint mechanisms because of the pressures and the way that the, the system will operate. Using ductile may allow some cost savings to make that happen and meet the requirements that we have as opposed to additional devices that would be needed for C900 PVC. So in essence, having that competitive between the materials may also give you a better advantage for some other cost aspects as well. As I mentioned last year, or last time we did, we broke out the pipe because there was a strong desire to, to try to mitigate cost, and it was sort of contractors were suggesting that was a good way to do it. We were pulling back from that because we believe it's in the best interest of the town to keep that pipe in terms of furnishing and installing under that contract that it was originally presented. So we pulled that back, really no big change to the project. It's just trying to give a little bit more competitive opportunity there. And then one of the things that we're evaluating, as I mentioned, 15 miles of line work, that's a very significant contract. And what we're looking at is, is it beneficial to maybe take that contract and split it up where that it can be appealing to multiple contractors to encourage bidding this time around and not, maybe folks not be so intimidated by the length of the contract or length of the line, if that makes sense. Benefit of that is it might could make construction time shorter. But keep in mind, as I mentioned earlier, that project is coupled with the pump station. So they have to come online at the same time. So where we may gain an advantage on time, we still have to have the other project completed at about the same time to work. But if it's a cost advantage and opens up opportunity for the project, that's something that we want to, we want to, you know, look at and make sure that we consider. The last slide that I have is where, where are we at and what are the next steps? We actually have, we have a conference call with the, with the town starting tomorrow. But one of the things that we're looking to suggest is as the project is ramping back up to coming out, perhaps with advertisement, moving to construction, and actually being able to move it ahead once we get the bids in hand. We're, we're looking at having an established biweekly call with town staff if they're so inclined. Could be a brief call, could be very in-depth, but the main thing is to make sure that now we're at the point to move this project forward. We're able to consistently keep that information flow so everyone knows that this project is ultimately finally moving. An item that's showing up on your agenda that I think that follows this relates to an SRF request. And one of the benefits that, that you have with the loan that was extended to you is Division of Water Infrastructure allows an increase of up to $5 million on a requested basis. And the benefit of that is obviously getting additional funding. But you don't have to get that additional funding by going through the competitive round to do that. If there's an amount greater than $5 million, you may, you would have to go back to competitive. So what this does is it gives an opportunity for the town to consider an increase in funding to be, you know, to be ready to move the project ahead once we get bids in hand. But the caveat to that is the state has indicated that in the middle of July, they will be making determinations on the fall, or what they call the scream around funding. They will be able to give us a better idea then of what excess money they have that could be contributed to this loan increase. But it has been suggested that the town go ahead, submit a letter, get it in front of them before that July timeline occurs and be, be available and ready to take advantage of having that loan increase as we get the project approvals finally, finally in place. And lastly, as we've been all working for, trying to, you know, getting ready to prepare for advertising and bidding, moving this project along to construction and actually the implementation. So all the things that we are prepared to date, I think we're, we're finally there. I think you would say, Chris, there has been some obstacles to the alignment changes has offered benefits, but it has delayed. But I think overall, it's going to, it's going to be a positive thing for the town. And those are the items that I wanted to convey to you today. Appreciate the opportunity. It would be more than welcome to answer any questions that you may have or what we presented or any other aspects of the, of the project.
Questions for Charles Davis?
Sure. Just a couple of comments, I guess. I'm glad to see that item about the biweekly update being added. I know that communication has been a, an issue on this project, and so I think that will help significantly with that. And, and just really the delays on this project have cost, you know, the town and our ratepayers millions of dollars likely. And it's really frustrating. And even this timeline is, is a delay from, you know, certainly anything we've expected and even delayed further from conversations I had last week. So it's, it's not great to see, and I would expect that we can maintain this timeline in, in anything. You know, particularly preparing for the bids as soon as that comes back. You know, that all of those things in preparation for the bid and advertisement align with whenever we would get the material back for it. I'm curious why the Little Buffalo Pump Station was not an option originally in the original design, if it's so much better.
That, that's a great question, and the reason is when this project was conceived and working with the city of Sanford, that option was not on the table. The city did not provide that as an option, and it really was related to the, the plans that they would have for that pump station and other utility improvements that they were looking at. And so the only option that was presented to Pittsboro was to connect to the wastewater plant directly. And that's what basically initiated the interlocal agreement. And they were, they were wise enough not to specifically put a, a point of connection, which allowed this flexibility with the agreement already in place. But as time has gone on and as they've developed utilities coming down to that site, and as you know, there's, there's a growth that's going to be necessitating improvements to that pump station. They had now come around and basically desire that to be a primary point of connection as opposed to when the project was conceived. So it's a very good question, but that, that option was not available to us.
Okay. Commissioner Ship, I would, I would occur with what Mr. Davis just said. It wasn't available. And part of that is because the tip mega site flows to that pump station. And so understanding what the capacities were to flow to the tip mega site, what Sanford was looking at there, obviously, a lot has changed over the last several years, particularly in the last few months with Vinfast. And even though Vinfast is flowing there, it's still more advantageous routing. And as Mr. Davis said earlier in his presentation, it is a better spot for us. It's certainly created a time delay, which is, which is not favorable to anybody. But I will say that, you know, fast forward five years down the road and this thing's flowing. This is a far superior connection point for us. It's shorter, it's a cleaner access kind of into a manhole into a pump station than going directly to the plant. I think it will be long-term superior to, to what we would have done otherwise.
Okay, okay, good. And so you're right, our, our next item is to increase our loan request to almost $27 million, which is good that that's allowed, but of course impacts ratepayers again. What is Rooton's estimation of the cost of this project, and does that cover it?
Honestly, you know, estimating right now this final is extremely difficult to do. We have been talking with the town and have provided estimate. I mean, honestly, it could be maybe a 38 that we're looking at. That was based on numbers that we received back last fall and what was projected in these numbers in hand. We do believe these cost reduction measures are going to have a great impact on that. The, the competition in piping side of it was, like I said, only receiving one for that type of pipe is going to be helpful. I could tell you that, you know, there, you know, that was an $8 million bid for the linear piping only. We should be able to see a significant reduction in that moving forward. But this, this next step of moving with producing pipe man gets us closer. And then, you know, hopefully, once we have bids in hand, we're going to have a better opportunity to know where we are and where we need to go and moving this project forward. But we've been working with the town to have means available to implement options to move it ahead and go to construction.
Yeah, and if I may borrow your time, maybe save you on the next step for number two here under miscellaneous number two is I think the goal with this is to have it approved, but we all hope we don't have to use it. Certainly, it's, it's not exciting to have a $21 million project blow into a $30 million project because there's no more, there's no more capacity in, in one or the other. So I think that the idea and premise behind this is we can ask for it without going to a competitive round in SRF funding. Basically, the, the letter that's under number two here on your agenda is all that's needed. I simply submit that to the state for that own, to Mr. Rizgard there, and they proceed forward with that. Obviously, we'll probably ask Charlie and Carl and those folks to birdie off that a little bit for us. They've got the connection at the state to help shepherd that along. But having that there allows us that, you know, when we get to this fall, we bid the project that we don't go, oh, man, if we just had that extra million dollars, we could let this thing. So if we go ahead and have that now, just like any other opportunity, the, the town has the ability to just not grant or award the project. So the project comes in, even if we've gotten $5 million. If the towns at that point says, you know what, we've thought, you know, about this, we understand how, I mean, we've had as many great conversations with this board as any board that's ever come on has, and I would pretty much about guarantee that. So if, if we get to that point where we have a bid in hand, we can still reject bids even if they're responsive because we may not want to choose to use that money. But I think if we get to that point, we say, you know what, this is an important project. We understand this has paid off over a series of years because it is a loan. That let's, let's go ahead and let the project and move forward. It gives us that flexibility to go ahead and move forward with it. As Mr. Davis was talking about with some of the options for cost reduction, we think a lot of that will help significantly and keep us within closer to budget. I think we will be probably next to $21 million regardless. And, and, and Charlie, if you'll correct my numbers, is, you know, we envisioned this project several years ago. We thought we'd have the pipe procured and installed for $70 a foot. The bid we got last fall was $98 just for the pipe itself. That didn't include my putting it in the ground. And, you know, again, I'm no pipe installer, but I know putting 18 inch pipe in the ground and digging it out is not going to be cheap either. So we were looking at probably upwards of $200 a foot to, to procure and install. That, that's a significant cost increase. So we hope, looking at the ductile iron pipe, and the best analogy I can say between C900 and ductile iron, DIP is always, has always typically been more expensive, the ductile iron pipe. But as we dealt with, and many of us probably had home projects during COVID where, you know, standard yellow pine lumber end up the amount, same price as Trex that. And so you say, well, do we use Trex? It's not the Trex got cheaper. It's just the, the cost got closer together. So we, we, we're kind of looking at that similar type of thing here where other advantages of using ductile iron, well, before it would have priced us out of the market, we wouldn't have wanted to bid that. Now, with, if you add C900 with restraining joints, does that exceed the cost of ductile iron pipe? And as Charlie said, it's going to be lined as well. So as you might imagine, sewer and wastewater is corrosive in nature. So you want to make sure that that metal doesn't corrode on us. So there might be some opportunities there. The blasting, I want to be clear about too, is that we're going to be not just indiscriminately blasting through town. What I anticipate us doing is, you know, digging through mainly the incorporated parts, but as we get to, to open country. As you recall, with the easements on this project, there was only seven properties we had to cross. So that means the vast majority of it's in DOT right of way. So as we get to more open country in between Pittsboro and Sanford, I think that's mainly where we're going to do that blasting. And it gives you some consideration about why that's cheaper. If we, if you have to dig with mechanical equipment and, you know, manpower, you're looking at probably 100 foot a day. If you blast, you can do 500 foot a day. So every day we blast, we can save a week of labor and expense. And when guys are renting trackos and excavators and all those things by, And when guys are renting trackos and excavators and all those things by by the week or the month, et cetera, that adds up pretty quickly. So we think that we we want to be very direct and clear that, you know, we're not going in between two houses and blasting the pipe out through it. That's good. That's going to be more of the mechanical removal. But when we get to open country where we feel like it's safe to do so, I think it'll provide some real cost savings. And again, we hope to avoid some volatility. If you don't know PVC is made out of petroleum, which is not the cheapest asset on the planet right now. So we do think there'll be some some more considerations for ductile iron pipe. So we we really looked at it, and I think this is a great example of what we call kind of value engineering. Sometimes that's kind of used to say, well, you're cheapening the product. And it's really just trying to find alternatives to to help us fit within the budget. So we hope that the bidders on this project will look at this. They'll think creatively, work within the constraints that we try to set up and provide us a really competitive project and hopefully one closer to our original budget.
So did we receive only one bid on the plastic pipe because there's only one producer still in business? Or that they already have all their production already bought up?
No, sir. What what happened there is actually with PVC pipe market, there are essentially four to five major manufacturers. And what we did was the procurement package we prepared was a direct solicitation to those vendors to bid. We formally bid that process, which meant we had to require through the DWI requirements as well as state statutes, a minimum of three bids receipts to open. We did. We only received one bid in the original bid opening. We readvertised the project, the minimum required by the statute, and then only received one bid. We were expecting two bids to come in in the second time. And a second vendor basically pulled out and did not bid on bid day. So we only received one. So we followed the the general statutes of the process. A lot of it had to do with a lot of those manufacturers get their materials. At that time, the raw materials and the residents and the things were kind of coming from a very small pool of vendors. And many of those larger companies, even though, and even 18 inch pipe, in in our world, it's small diameter. But in the PVC world, it's considered large diameter. And so a lot of those vendors were just not hit at the time that we were bidding, that they were not prepared to bid about the quantity that we needed and the size that we needed. So it was just kind of a perfect storm, no pun intended. But we did follow the process to get as many competitive bids as possible, but ultimately only ended up getting one. And the same thing happened with with the contract two. That was formally bid. We only received two. And we were at the point to have to rebid. And that's when the town looked at the bigger picture and decided to pull back and think about different strategies. So we didn't rebid that. The exact same thing happened from a, you know, contractor standpoint. But we followed the process of bidding, trying to get formal bids, number required, and then we followed up looking to take the next step to get as many as we could to to evaluate and move forward.
Chris, you mentioned the annexations too. What's the status of the annexations?
I mean, easements.
Easements, I'm sorry.
So the there's still, we're working on the easement for Evelyn Candy Parcel. That's the one that the board has allowed us to condemn. We are trying to finalize the routing across the Lee Brick site, which is where the the line deviates from its original route. We've had conversations with Helix Ventures LLC, who was the party there. We are working with Wooton to get confirmation for Mr. Messick to complete that. We talked about that. We met with the Wooton team, I believe it was Thursday of last week. And so Kristen Pierce is supposed to be sending us something for that. So so Mr. Messick feels comfortable with the routing. Basically, I think it's just confirmation as much as anything else. And and that's a lot of the the some of the complications. You've got a bunch of engineers and a bunch of people involved in this. And so we're really trying to hopefully have these biweekly meetings to to settle some of these issues to maybe be more have them be with less information, you know, rather than having, you know, less meetings with a bunch of information, have more meetings with a little bit of finite information. That way we can create a more simple task list. We have that. And then there's the easement across the Dale Webb track. But that property is owned by Chatham Park. So that one's a formality of sorts, but still working through some of the, as I understand it, some of the elevations and Kent has been involved in working with the folks at Wooton, as well as the folks at McKinnon Creed who are designing those that line through the Townsend track, which is now on the St. Webb.
I just think that, you know, at one point, we probably thought this was going to be contracted about two years ago. And then we thought it was going to be contracted last fall, and we're still working on three easements today. So obviously, we wouldn't have started construction last fall or two years ago without easements. So I think, you know, whatever resources we can put on those to get those complete as soon as possible, so they don't delay the project further and cost the town more money is going to be money well spent for everyone.
I will say that those easements were prepared and provided at the time to acquire and do different things. I mean, part of it was that cross-country routing that we did.
Sure.
Those easements were ready to go until that process changed in terms of the rerouting. And then the condemned site has been one that, oh, I know that's been, I mean, it's been around for quite a while, but it's been pursued, but it's been difficult.
To solve.
All numerous property owners. So even though there were seven, we've had those in the town's hands for quite a while. And there's just been logistics to get them going. But yes, I agree with you. They they will be in hand. And then the routing that we've got changed down, we're close to now, those two easements are should be close in hand. So by the time we get to bidding, that that will be a moot point. But I understand your point. Well, taken.
And I think too, it's worth taking another look at VE items, you know. Assume this comes in over budget again in January, whatever the new timeline is, you know, what what would we do then? Blasting could have been something that was done before. Obviously, the pipe is ever changing. You know, just going through specifications again, pre pre meet, trying anything we can.
Just a note on blasting, that that was something that the town originally and staff, previous staff did not want to include. We discussed that as as going ahead and making that change prior to the bid. The determination was to receive bids and then make a determination after the fact. We have now since moved that ahead and made that change ahead of time. So so it was considered at the time. But I follow what you're saying. And just to build on that, the apparent low contractor for the pump station work, actually, we've reached out to them as well because we had started a conversation with them about VE items back a year ago. They may not be the successful bidder again this time, but I looked to them to give us some input. And so we're looking at things at the pump station as well. Anything and everything that we can add that gives a competitive advantage and helps reduce costs, it is on the table, and that's what we actively have been doing.
Okay.
So so we are actively doing that. Yes.
All right, great. Thank you.
I have a question. Further questions for Mr. Davis?
I don't have a question. I'll just echo Commissioner Ship's comments regarding communications with our staff. And I'll biweekly. I'm just wondering if that's, should it be weekly? I'll leave that to our town manager because we have been left out in the dark years back with with this project. My other con- comment is on the multiple contractors. But we we have just a straight general contractor at that and and other multiple contractors on the line work.
They would be, that would be, we would break it up into, let's say, if we call that contract two, and we would break that up probably as two A, two B, and there would be two prime contractors who would be bidding. It very well could be the same contractor who would win both. It could all, it could turn out to be alternate contractors when they're going to have probably the same or similar subs working for them. The other issue is we have a lot of directional drill work along this project. And probably the same pool of contractors would be bidding on both. But it would be a prime contract, could be the same contractor, and there could be an opportunity for a reduction, a cost reduction, if it's successful. If we broke it into multiple, successful award, maybe given a benefit. We've done that before. Originally, the timeline, the 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 overall concept of keeping it as one contract, it's much better to have it in one contractor's hands because then he's responsible for everything from construction to testing to implementation to operation, even though this was a 15 mile horse main, which is significant and lengthy. Contractor would, in the time that we provided, would have provided multiple crews and worked on different segments throughout the whole process of the project. So it's not necessarily thinking about this would give a time or it's the time saving is not necessarily the option here. It's the exposure to having more opportunity for maybe more bidders to get in and offer that competitive advantage as opposed to it just being one contract. So does that?
And I guess pretty much a major problem is under the two rivers, right?
No, they're both going to be directional driven. So should not be a problem. They just are lengthy, lengthy drills. Yes.
Thank you, Charles.
Yes. Yeah, I I think probably the, if it's appropriate for summary, I think the best way we can summarize this is that, you know, staff, you know, myself, Kent, Adam on our team are are probably working with as much vigor as we've had with this project. Certainly, it's been on our radar. We've been trying to push this thing forward. We've run into a number of obstacles. You know, there there's a thing about spilt milk. And so I think at this point forward, we're just looking to to get this done. You know, get it done in a safe and quick and then, you know, cost effective manner and move on to the next one. I I know this board, I know, I know, I'm certainly tired of hearing about it. And y'all been here longer than I have. So I think we're excited to to put the full court press on this, get it done, and move on to the next thing. So we're going to do everything we can. And I think Wooton's they're right there with us to make sure that happens.
Excellent. Did you have some questions?
I have a question. I just have one small comment in that if you could certainly keep the board more apprised after you have those meetings at least once a month, so that we will know sort of what's going on. Because I do agree, there has been a lot of delays. And as you said, we don't want to go back. We want to go forward. But definitely, we would like to get updates.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, the the when we submit the ORID, we thought it would be 30 days and it took, you know, 60 to 90. We thought that would be done in April, and it just got submitted last week. So and that was, I think we got an email on Thursday from from Ms. Kabaki on that one. So there's there's been a period of of not a whole lot of portable information, but certainly sometimes just a status on that is just as sufficient about know where things are at. So I'll 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 do my best to keep y'all as informed as I can.
Okay, thank you.
I I agree. And just think, you know, particularly this schedule looking ahead timeline here. You know, if we can get frequent updates that we're on track with it. And I guess updates if we are delayed as well. But that's we're we're paused on development in Pittsburgh waiting on this project.
Yeah, Charlie's been forewarned that if we get off schedule too much with this, he'll be standing right back here helping me defend off the the answers while we're off schedule. So.
Thank you so much, Charlie Davis.
Thank you.
Have we sufficiently covered item number two under miscellaneous such that we are ready to authorize the manager to submit the letter to NCD EQ? Do you have additional things to say about it?
No, ma'am. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but I think I kind of covered the premise.
That $5 million increase sounds like it's well worth having the ability to hopefully, we won't need it, but but having the opportunity to be able to get it.
Outside of pressing send on an email, the work's been done to ask for it. So I think it's a pretty easy step for us to request it to see what, see where it goes.
Yeah. So is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Ship, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Baldwin. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Very nice. Thank you. I must admit that when I got this letter, that is the subject of miscellaneous item number three. I I don't believe I've ever read anything, Mr. Kennedy, that had more bureaucratic psychobabble with it. Is that, is that a rude thing for me to say? Or?
I would say it's it's not the worst I've read because if you ever deal much with the federal government, they have like the whole front page that tells you about the burden of the form and don't even tell you what form it is till you get to page two. That might be number one, but this I I I won't argue this might be a close in the top five or top three.
So I'm it's past my pay pay grade to be able to discuss this, but perhaps you'd like to.
Yes, ma'am. And 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 what we're referring to here is is the, Mayor Perry and I received a letter from Susan Kabaki with NCD EQ informing the town of a potential designation as a distressed utility. As you might imagine, being a distressed utility is is not something that we're probably going to put in a frame and hang in town hall. But at the same time, I I think there is a a soberness to it of seeing how the how the financial aspect of this has gone. I think some of it is when you particularly look at some of the factors as a state and the local government commission looks at distressed utilities, it's it's primarily from a financial construct. It's not, you know, they do factor in sanitary sewer flows, what we call SSOs and other mechanical type things. But it's it's primarily a financial analysis. And when they look at that, they they score every all the utilities. And if you're a single utility, i.e. if you just do water or just do sewer, if you're an eight or higher, so eight, nine, 10, et cetera, that you are considered to potentially be distressed. If you're a nine or higher, if you run a dual utility like like we have with water and wastewater both, then you're considered to be distressed. Our score, according to Ms. Kabaki, came in at 11 for the for the year ending 21, which would have been last year. So our fiscal year 2021 budget is what that was referring to. If you look at the scores of that and you just simply analyze it from our utility, my my inspection of the document is if we ran a phenomenal utility that we were abundantly funded, all those things, we would still score a four. Because one of those is do you serve a population above 10,000 people? If you don't, you get a point added to your mark. Well, obviously, we don't. Our our population is not 10,000 in in area served. So there's a number of those factors there. There are a couple of the points that I think I would like to seek clarification for, and I probably will seek clarification for, just to make sure. But overall, I think the main, one of the main premises of it is, one, the affordability didn't get triggered. Now, again, that was looking at that individual fiscal year's budget. And also that we didn't, we didn't get deemed for, you know, what I would call, you know, corruptness or a lack of 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 financial controls in the system. We weren't, it wasn't any of that, which is generally a, I won't say a common occurrence, but a common occurrence among those in just in the distressed category. I would say it's it's fair to suffice that there's maybe some lackluster fiscal controls that go into that. A couple of the marks that I would I would probably like to seek clarification for is, and they're generally used. I just wonder if it's the amount of money or the juxtaposition with the rest of the budget that talks about transfers in and out. And and where how the LGC in particular looks at, when we take money and we take it out of the enterprise fund and put it in the capital project fund, even though it's going to an enterprise expense, are they seeing that as a transfer out to pay for other things? Conversely, we've got a fund set up for system development fees. When those funds are received by the town, they go into to that fund, which is not technically under the umbrella of the enterprise fund. Those then go into the enterprise fund when we transfer them to do projects. Does that, and I want to make sure that they are, how they're reviewing that, is that seen as a transfer in saying the enterprise fund can't pay for itself? So there are some accounting nuances here that I think we could have a question about. Obviously, you know, I think we could probably deduct a few points here or there. But at the end of the day, does it really change us? You know, we're at 11. We need to be under nine. So if we can't find three points, we're still distressed according to the designation. I I could probably reasonably go through that. Some of those things is about how, you know, how your rates are structured. When you look at the the budget that was for fiscal year 2021, there was no rate increase. Whereas each of you are acutely aware, last year, we did a 43% increase to water and 18% and 18% increase to wastewater. This year, we're looking forward, beginning on Friday of this week, on July 1st, we have 15 15% increase to both. I think the state will look very relieved upon that of saying that we're trying to correct some of these things. We understand that the cost recovery has not been perhaps adequate year in, year out. But as we look at this, we've approved some But as we look at this, we've approved some significant rate increases. I think that will be looked at favorably. So a- again, I think there's some more to kind of um, converse about with the state, see what the true analysis is. Fortunately, a- and I, I'm, I'm glad in many ways, I don't have experience dealing with a distressed utility. Never been a part of one, which I think is probably a good thing, but not. But I think we can work with the state, figure out what the, what the disadvantages are, what the advantages are. As you look at the options uh, within that document, there are basically three. Uh, one is that we appeal this of some form and say, we think your, your scoring is incorrect. And we have until September thirtieth this year to basically submit that. Uh, option two um, is that we have an ability to go to the state and say, don't designate us yet, let us see if we can fix this and scrutinize me next year. Option three is simply, as I referred to it earlier today, when I was conversing with some staff is, we've got the lap flashlight put in our face, our hands are up and we're saying, you got me, I'm distressed, you know, call me distressed. And if we do that, as, as you will see in the letter from Ms. Kabaki, there's a letter that states that the board can adopt a resolution that has to be submitted by July first. That's obviously a pretty quick turnaround for something that we just got. Um, I opened this in the mail as soon as I got it, about two thirty on Friday afternoon. So that's not a, a, a good turnaround for me to try to uh, one, thankfully we have two meetings a month. I would say the vast majority of communities in North Carolina are probably meeting the first half of their month. Anybody else who received this is probably calling a special meeting of their board to even talk about it. So may, maybe that's a, a positive externality of it all, that we have a second meeting in June. It does say that we can communicate with Ms. Kabaki, um, simply saying that we have an intent, but we weren't able to adopt a resolution. Um, I, I think part of the conversation for this evening is to see what the board feels about it. And I think there's a lot of unknown on both sides, both staff and the board. As we, as we look at distressed utilities, there are potential advantages. Oddly enough, it's not completely a reprimand. Um, now it does come with, you know, all of us, myself included, are going to, if we, if we classify as distressed, we're all going to a training. That, that's part of, we're all going to a class. It's going to tell us how to manage money. And, you know, maybe productive, may not be, but we're all going to have to do it. Every board member, myself, and I presume the finance officer, which would be Heather, would all have to attend that to make sure.
Specific board members, isn't it?
I think it's everyone who has a vote. Um, so I think it would be the entire board. Um, again, part of those, some of those subtleties that I can't, I can't speak for certain, but it does say that there is training involved, both for the elected body and for staff who is responsible for the budget. So there's some of those things, but as we look at um, particularly our, our merger concepts with the city of Sanford with our utility, I think the state would have to consider that as part of this as well. Um, one potential advantage there, and I don't know that there's a, a guarantee, if anything's guaranteed, we had approached the state um, a number of months ago as we were preparing the information to discuss with the board about a potential merger of our utility. And, and while we've used the word regionalization of that utility, and we said, well, we met with three representatives of the state who would be the same people we would be dealing with with this. And said, what, what, what money's available for folks who want to regionalize? That's, that's been a big thing of the state to say, we want regionalization utilities. It's, it's more efficient. They said, well, are either one of you distressed? And we said, no, we're not. They said, okay, well, the maximum you can get, if you're not, if neither are distressed, is four hundred thousand dollars to pursue regionalization. If one of the entities is distressed, that number goes to five million dollars. So that's a, that's an obvious, you know, doesn't take a lot to say four point six million dollars is a lot more for us, maybe go attend a class or two and hopefully learn more about how to run a utility. Beyond that, there's also um, some priority um, into the SRF funding cycles that there is monies reserved by the state that first go to distressed utilities. Um, the state has um, a- and I've actually in, in, in many uh, forums kind of argued against that of, of creating a priority for distress. I may back way into uh, being a beneficiary of such. Um, I think good progress are good projects and whether there's distress or not. But it, but it, under these uh, guidelines that we're working from at the state level, um, if there's an advantage of being distressed, it, it may provide great revenue for us. And, and mainly in the fact that our SRF project that we talked about with Mr. Davis a few moments ago, that is not a grant, that is not loan forgiveness, that is a loan from the state to, to do the project, to put it out over a number of years, so we're not paying cash for it. A lot of the distressed utilities are getting grants and loan forgiveness, principal forgiveness. So they are not, that is, that is a greater benefit to the ratepayers than the simple loan itself. Now, I'm not trying to turn uh, potential more into something sexy here by any means, but there may be advantages of being distressed, particularly in our situation where we're, we're considering a merger. I've, I've spoke with the city of Sanford this morning. Um, certainly uh, it is probably not their preference to merge with a distressed utility, but I was informed that it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't ruin the deal, that they understand our premise with this. And, and particularly when I was discussing kind of the strategic nature of it, not trying to undermine anything by any means, but saying that, okay, if there is an ability um, to us improve our utility, which is the whole point of being classified, the designation is to improve your utility. If, if that's what we can, we can do and we, we absorb and accept that designation and can move forward with some, some better good for the utility that offsets a lot of expense for our customers and ratepayers, it, it's hard to argue against that. Um, I don't have the full story tonight um, because it's, it's so fresh. Um, and I don't, I don't mean to, you know, overwhelm it with seemingly positive things of saying, we're going to get inundated with cash if we, if we simply adopt this resolution. I don't think that's as simple. But there are some, some opportunities there. So with that, I'll, I'll stop talking and allow the board to ask questions or comments or whatever it may be, and we'll see where we end up.
There's no real adverse trigger spoiled daily in Sanford potentially puts us in a better spot in terms of receiving funds.
Yeah, there are some, there are some requirements. Obviously um, we're required to do a rate study, we're required to do a certain number of things to go with it. Um, we've actually uh, put a pause button on our rate study that was associated with our CIP. Um, as we saw that number and said, okay, probably don't need a rate study to tell us it's going to be a rate we don't want to pay. So we, we've saved those funds and are actually looking to channel that into our agreement with Fries and Nichols that is on behalf of us and Sanford to look at that rate study as well. So I think there's probably a question of the state of saying, does that count? You know, towards some of those things. Um, because I, I, I would doubt that most folks who are, who are in this situation where they're just getting this letter, probably aren't as far along as we are in terms of a conversation of a remedy. Most folks are getting this saying, oh, man, we've got to do something now. Then they're talking about a merger, then they're talking about other things. Um, so while it may not seem like we're that far ahead in some of these aspects, I do think we have a discernible advantage in terms of some timelines. Um, the others may not because we're already contemplating these things.
Is there, in, in some of these benefits, is there benefits to having a score of fifteen versus a score of nine? Or i- in, in, I, I mean, I say that sort of jokingly, but I, I think, I think I, you know, from what I can comprehend of this in the last two days, I, I don't think we qualify for all those points to, to a, a good thing about our staff and the actions that we have taken. Um, so I, I think that's, you know, maybe important to point out that we are working on it. But it does seem like there's specific advantages for us. And we certainly feel distressed as a utility, which is why we've taken the actions we've taken and increased our rates and all of those things. But, but I think that in doing it, uh, maybe if we can say, you know, yes, we're distressed, but we didn't want to talk about a couple of these points. I think that can be beneficial and, and obviously to our, our hopeful merger partners of Sanford. Also, we're not, you know, spending the money out in Vegas. This is, we're doing everything we can. And, you know, but we're still in this situation because we started with four.
Right. To, to your first question, I don't think there's like a Cleveland Browns approach to it where if you tank and go oh and sixteen, do you get the, the first pick in the SRF? You know, draft. Um, uh, but I think there is uh, probably more concern if that. Um, and I think a lot of it too is just clarification of, you know, we feel like we've been uh, you know, operating within the constraints. Obviously this is a budget that's from two years ago now. Um, so it's hard to, to, for all of us maybe to go forensically back to it. Um, but the understanding some of the mechanics of saying, okay, we're allowed to do capital project funds. Uh, like that's abundantly clear in statute that we can do that. So if the state's flagging that, I have concerns. If they're flagging something else, I want to know what they're flagging. And so I think while we can say we accept, but we also want more information about how we got to this point. Because again, e- even if we were successful in, in appealing of sorts, are we better off at an eight and not be in distress? Or are we better to get clarification and, you know, even, even if we got something deducted, be it a nine or a ten?
I, I don't even know, like reduction in points necessarily, but just clarifying some of getting into the program and then clarifying how we got into there, maybe.
Correct. I mean, and I think that's kind of, hopefully that's the premise of it is, is that you learn how to not be in that position. Um, and, and certainly folks like myself and Heather who um, consider ourselves very much professionals in the budgetary world. It, it's concerning to know that someone flagged something without too much detail why they flagged. And, and trying to figure out why, because, and again, it could be something as simple as, hey, our budget showed that we were putting ARPA money, which could be used for general fund purposes, into the enterprise fund for the GAC project at the plant. So we put in last year, you know, we, we said we were going to get one point two eight million from the federal government, split that in half, ended up being one point three nine seven. We're still waiting on the second draw. But you, you put seven hundred thousand dollars of supposedly general fund money unrestricted into the enterprise fund. If that's what they flagged, well, then I will go back to them and say, well, under the guidance from the federal government, I'm allowed, actually the first guidance said it had to be used towards water and wastewater projects. So I, I would take issue with that. And I don't know how in depth they're looking at that, or are they simply just looking at the book saying, non-enterprise revenue, go into the enterprise fund flagged. And every time there's a flag, here's a point. I, again, there are a hundred counties and five hundred and fifty-one incorporated municipalities in North Carolina. Not all of them running utility, but a lot of them do. So I don't know how the level of detail they look at each and every one to know, oh, that was ARPA money, not, we weren't taking tax dollars and putting it into the enterprise fund.
I, I think it speaks to the pace of government too. I guess that, you know, two years later, then they send us a letter and say, hey, we looked over your documents and you're in trouble. Um, and, and I think to your point, a lot of municipalities are looking at that and saying, oh, well, we're even in worse trouble now, two years later. Uh, I think maybe we are, but we're making plans to be in less trouble two years later.
Yeah, I, I think it goes to a lot of conversations we've been having. Again, this hasn't snuck up on us. It, it's, it's still a shock, as the mayor said, to get this letter in the mail. Um, and as you said, maybe I, I probably jinxed it because I've said, I feel a lot of distress about our utility, but I'm not sure that qualifies. I didn't see that on the rubric of how many points if your town mayor is distressed about the utility.
I think our constituents certainly are.
I agree, I agree, I agree. They, they all share that same, same thing with me, so.
What I was thinking is that basically to look at those points, clarify those points with uh, with the Mrs. Ms. Kabaka, clarify those points with her, and they did say that you could request an extension beyond the July first, twenty twenty-two in order to, and before you decide that you want to accept being a distressed utility. So I would like to go with that particular process if at all possible.
Okay.
Look at those points, clarify those with her, but go on and request the extension of course first. And then look at those particular items that they have indicated because they may just need to be clarified and explain to them exactly what is going on and then go forward.
Yeah, as I understand the letter, that again, we can, we can demonstrate a case while we shouldn't be designated. And they can review that and probably what they would do is we're just review our audit from this year, from twenty-one, twenty-two. And that's, that, the audit is due to the LGC by what I always call Halloween, because it's due by October thirty-first. And then we usually present that in, you know, December, January timeframe to the board after the LGC has approved it. That's probably the timeframe they're looking at next spring and say, okay, did your audit show market improvement? And they'll probably go back through the scoring again. And if you don't meet at that time, I don't know how well they're, much they're going to ask, but probably just designate. But again, uh, part of the clarification we're going to get is, is understanding that. But your comment is spot on for what I'm looking for this evening of, what is the tenor of the board of, again, I, I believe if I recall correctly, there's a, there's a date in mid-July about some of this too, where the, the, they're going to vote on something.
Yeah.
Um, so that's, e- even, even if we didn't take action this evening, which I'm just saying that we're not, we're still probably looking at calling a special meeting to meet that mid-July deadline of saying, Ms. Kabaki, we couldn't adopt a resolution before July first, but I've got a meeting on July seventh that had a resolution adopted, here's that resolution in advance of that mid-July date. Um, if we pass that by, then I think we, we certainly are, are going to lose those benefits of, of this fiscal year in terms of the, the SRF, um, the regionalization monies, all those types of things.
The deadlines are, are my concern. And um, Mr. Kennedy, I, I sympathize with you because the word distressed is not, i- is, is one that actually I'd been, been thinking about often as regards our utilities. I've often been distressed to learn what, what our circumstances are. So it actually wasn't all that great of a surprise to me. But my primary concern in doing some poking around was to just try and learn what, what are the drawbacks?
Yeah.
And everything that they're asking of us, except for the mandatory education, we're already doing. We're already pursuing the, we've, we've, as I understand it, we've completed the infrastructure assessment. So that's what the CIP is. Um, the rate study, I knew that it was in conversations. We have the old rate study, which I think is inadequate, but it was used to bolster our vote for the Sanford Forest main. And that included the modeling that they're looking for. So we might want to ask them, does that give us any points? But probably not, because again, I think that it would be inadequate, given that uh, especially given that its conclusion that we would actually see reductions in rates after the Sanford Forest main project was completed, which is clearly not going to happen. But uh, my, my, what I've understood from poking around is that um, was a lot of folks, a lot of municipalities that were uh, notified of this potential designation previously in prior years who were really shocked at this and are probably in much worse condition than we're in. And there was no apparent evident uh, benefit whatsoever to pursuing the designation because there was no money for it. But now uh, there is the once in a lifetime opportunity apparently through ARPA funds for substantial grant funds to come uh, with the designation. So um, I don't see any drawbacks. I know the staff are working diligently to address all of these matters that give us points towards a negative score. And yet we have the opportunity to greatly improve our options at grant funds. So um, uh, Commissioner Baldwin, I very much appreciate your desire that we get some answers to these questions, but I, I would, I would urge that we maybe accept it and answer those questions after the designation. Because again, I think that we're lining up everything that's required in this letter.
Those are sort of, so trying to position ourselves to get help from as many avenues as possible, it seems like something we should be taking on the chip. Again, with the caveat that we're trying to correct issues at the same time.
Yeah.
That is working on it. Then we can probably already knock a few points off of this. It, it almost seems like, I hate to say give it, but.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's my understanding as well.
Use the card of the deck analogy, card of.
I mean, there's, there are, there are communities that are in much, much worse economic distress than we are. And so we're probably in that marginal area where we're maybe a little lucky that we made the cut.
Yeah, and I think the idea of using it as an advantage, I think that will be primarily the conversation we have with Sanford and looking at how, particularly the timeline of, okay, how long would we be considered distressed by the state? Because it's not a perpetual designation. You know, the idea is that they flag you, they, you know, sends you to detention for a little bit, and then you, then you, you know, recover and you come back to the general population of utilities. The, I, I think from Sanford's perspective, what they're going to look at is this saying, okay, well, we understand what the potential liabilities from a financial position are with the town of Pittsburgh and associating with that. If there's an advantageous designation that allows more funding to be injected into that system, I can't believe they'll think of anything as a positive for their sake. Because again, the idea is that they're, they will be working with us to absorb cost. And particularly just with the merger, you know, and the expense that goes into that. If there are projects, if there are, you know, fees associated with that, drawing against $400,000, I'll take 400, but 5 million sounds a lot better.
And I think if we're pursuing a merger, if in the end we decide that's where we're going, I believe that it's even greater than that.
Yeah. And it would likely affect how that, how that merger is structured and the timeline of it. Because if there's, if there continues to be an advantage of being distressed, it may create a separate terms of the contract where portions might be merged, but other portions may not be because there's an advantage of being distressed. And when that removes itself, it all consolidates then. So it probably affects some of the framework of even the merger that we wouldn't have been able to even contemplate seven days ago.
Well, I think much of the purpose of the Viable Utilities Program is to urge non-viable utilities to consider mergers. So we're already doing our homework. We're already doing all the right things. And I think that this is something that I can, I can easily support tonight, but I certainly understand if others are reluctant or want to hear more.
That was my question too, is what the process of becoming undistressed? Because if we accept the designation, and, and I mean, to step back a little bit, the timelines of this are ridiculous really, when they send us a letter on June 23rd that says, tell us you're designated by July 1st, or if you don't agree, then tell us by September 30th. It doesn't make any sense, but that's fine.
We have our own problems, and I'll wink a little bit at Charlie behind you about sending things to DQ and expecting a timeline for response, so.
Right. So all, all that aside, I mean, it's, if we accept the designation of distress, they write us a check for $5 million for regionalization, and then they go through our paperwork the next day, and we're not distressed anymore, you know, what, what happens to that? Or, you know, how, I don't think anything moves that quickly, but it's interesting point that you brought up about, you know, the timing of sections of the merger or things like that. And to be clear, we're, I'm pursuing a merger, but.
Well, I, I think the, and what would be, none of us can speak with, with full certainty of is while we hope to get, you know, at least $400,000 to facilitate the regionalization of our utilities with the city of Sanford, we don't know if that's sufficient or not. That may prove insufficient in some ways to properly, you know, investigate it and go through the mechanics of it. So I, I think, I think if we were a recipient of additional monies, and again, I don't, I don't know that it's binary, it's either 400 or 5 million, there's probably some in between there. I do, I do understand it, and I, and I believe I'm correcting this, that there's a separate fund for that, for regionalization itself that, so unless there's just an inundation of that, which I don't believe there will be, that funds available, that I, I mean, I, I think it would be a straight face argument either way to say that that's necessary. And again, you know, if we merge and comes off the list because that's a result of it, then, you know, that's, that's, that's what should happen.
And I'll say, I, I agree with Commissioner Barnes. I think that I'd be okay to make this, i- if we have a four-day window without an extension, and hearing that Sanford has said this won't affect our, our merger, which I think is really important. It's definitely not worth being designated distressed if it upsets the merger, because then we're in a much worse state.
Yes.
But if that's not the case, then I think we do accept that designation, but clarify then how we got all the points that we got, and make sure we don't need to make any.
How to work ourselves, ourselves out of it.
Right, right. And, and that we don't need to make any accounting changes going forward that are acceptable to an audit, but not acceptable to whatever, you know, formula they use for this designation, things like that.
And I think, one for own sake, I know I'm going to ask for clarification, whether anybody else cares or not. And I believe Sanford, we want to know, you know, one of those things like, how bad is it? You know, we, we want to know we're buying into, and is this a technicality or is this something greater than that? And so I think they'll, they'll want to know, I certainly, if the shoes were reversed, I would, I would want to, I'd be asking those questions.
I believe that this type of analysis would be part of the merger anyway. It's been jumpstarted by the state sending us a letter about it, but I would expect, you know, due diligence from Sanford's side to look at these things, our rates, our plans, our transfers in and out of the enterprise funds.
Right. And I think that's, you know, testament to what Commissioner Barnes already said of like, you know, we've already started doing those things or preparing ourselves to provide those things for discovery. Ms. Kabaki did send me a draft resolution. I got that late this evening, and she copied that to me and Mayor Perry. If the board was willing to do it, I didn't send it out right when I got it, do the, being late in the afternoon, didn't want to pop off one more email to you, but again, I don't. Welcome any more feedback from other board members about where you feel like you are tonight.
I like Mayor Bertin's, Baldwin's idea of asking for an extension of time that the board is interested in, but needs more detail regarding the designation and that. And that way we've covered ourselves both ways.
And I think if we ask about any timelines, if, if there's talk about something, and, you know, they, they picked July 1 for a reason, and they pick in theory, September 30th for a reason. But if they've got a meeting in the middle of July to make decisions based on this, you know, hopefully they could tell us about that is, you know, we wanted to buy July 1st, but July 8th is, is the date before our meeting on the 12th, or
Yeah.
whatever that is.
My, my, my one concern there is that we, we'd be maybe not at the head of the pack of people jostling for these funds, but certainly in the mob and not at the tail end. My understanding is that after a certain cutoff point, I think it's the summer, summer awards, the remainder of ARPA funds that will be awarded in the fall are much smaller, potentially 30%.
Oh, yeah. I mean, there was conversation earlier in the year that there would be zero funds available in the September round for SRF and other funding. Is my understanding that the state has intentionally withheld some of the money available.
They are.
Just because some folks weren't able to, to get a packet put together. So they, they definitely will have more applications than they will money in the first round, and I suspect it'll be the same in the second round.
Yeah.
And so I think that's where some of the, the strategy is, is that designation, is that propel you to a higher priority in the line than us competing against the city of Raleigh's utility?
Or does the date of your resolution matter to that designation either? I mean, I don't know if that affects us doing now on July 1st or July 6th?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, what was it in the, in the memo where it was stated that if we couldn't get it together, then they certainly just would appreciate expressions of interest to Ms. Kabaki and that that would suffice, I understood, so.
Yeah, I mean, the, from, from the letter itself, it says, if you wish to be designated as a distressed unit, but cannot complete the formal request, provide the resolution by July 1st, 2022, please contact Susan Kabaki by July 1st of 2022. So basically, I, I think we'd have to commit by Friday of this week. Either way, either formally via resolution or what I would like a request is a, is a simple vote tonight to communicate that to Ms. Kabaki and then discuss. And what I would take with that, at that point, is probably just probably stating on the record generically that we'd likely would call a special meeting of the board to adopt a resolution. And not have a date, we would advertise that accordingly. And then I would call Ms. Kabaki in the morning and let her know of our intent, voted on by the board, we did not adopt a resolution. And when is my timeline for that, to get that to her? And I presume she won't say July 2nd, but it'll be some, some, I would presume somewhere near July 1st.
I think, I mean, the way I read this though is what is, is different than what Commissioner Baldwin is suggesting, that they're, they're asking us to say that we want to be designated by that date. And for example, if we didn't have a meeting between, you know, in the seven days from when this letter was sent, that, that that's what that option could be used for, but not necessarily to say, you know, we may want to, but we want more clarification or more time for clarification, which I think is reasonable. But it doesn't seem to be what they're offering.
I thought they were just offering, if you can't get me the information, then just ask for an extension. That's what I thought.
I, I don't even think, I don't think we need, if we choose not to self-designate, if you will, I don't think we need to do anything. Because option two, and again, I,
That's right.
I, I think basically what it says is that, and I'll, I'll read it just, just for the sake of the record, it says, you may take actions you deem appropriate to remedy the deficiencies identified through the assessment. Talent Pittsburgh will be reassessed in the annual review next spring, and if Talent Pittsburgh's score meets or exceeds the threshold for designation, for a second consecutive year, division staff will recommend the Talent Pittsburgh designation as a stressed unit under the viable utility program, such as to the approval by the authority and the commission. We encourage Talent Pittsburgh to look at the assessment scores and seek assistance from the viable utility program or other resource agency partners to help address areas of concern.
Right.
So in essence, if we pocket veto this,
What was that?
If we pocket veto this, if we just simply say, we're not going to take action, thanks, Susan, but we're not going to do anything. Nothing's going to, nothing's going to change with our designation until at least next year's assessment. So again, they're going to look at this current fiscal year that we're in now, fiscal year 21, 20, ending Thursday of this week on June 30th. They're going to review our audit, they're going to look at our finances, and they would assess it then. And then if we don't meet the merits of being equal to or exceeding nine, then they're going to recommend that we become distressed. And I would say at that point, if we've received this letter of, of warning, if you will, and don't act with the necessary steps, then I don't think they're going to ask us. I think they're just going to tell us you're distressed.
But, right, but if it's, if it's a benefit, we may only have from July 1st to next spring to be a distressed.
If, if you want to, if you want to investigate it, appeal it, whatever, I think we've got a year. If you want to utilize it, I think we have a much, I think we've got a couple of weeks.
But I guess like,
If that.
Technically, the way that I read number three is if you wish to be designated and you can do a resolution by July 1st, and that's good. Or you have to say, we wish to be designated, but we could not complete the resolution. And then you get, but you still, either way, you're saying, you have to say, we wish to be designated
Yeah.
by July 1st.
I, I think that's right.
I don't think there's an option to say we want more time, even though they only gave us seven or nine days.
And, and I don't think there's any, any assurance whatsoever that there will be funds next year. But I, I think that it is the case that it's going to be, if, if we receive this type of letter in two consecutive years, then it would be not, not compulsory, but a likely designation. Yeah. And
I think too, yes, I agree. And I think to Commissioner Ship's comment, I think what, what I'm understanding, and I, and I'm reading this again, I think I would agree with you there, is that if you want to qualify as a distressed unit within the fiscal year 22, 23, we have to make that decision by July 1st. E- either by common vote here or formal resolution of the board. If we don't, I would, I would say there's probably not a, there's not like a January 1st option, as I'm reading this, that, because I presume they got to look at your books for the full 12-month period. You know, the 360, you know, banking days of, to make sure that it's, it's assessed correctly next year. So yeah, I think we've got until July 1st to make that determination.
I think you can make the determination by July 1st, indicating you might want to be distressed. But the formal request can be submitted by resolution after, once you've spoken with, with Ms. Kabaki, after July 1st, 2022. The formal requests or the formal whatever it was. Verbally request that distressed. And that, that's why I was saying that I, I still prefer, as an internal auditor, I prefer for things to be, you know, found out, is this exactly what was indicated? What did you base it on? So I still believe that, but you know, whatever the preference of the board.
Is it, is it more prudent to make a decision tonight or to simply call a special meeting on Thursday via Zoom where I can present you a resolution and hopefully talk to Ms. Kabaki on either tomorrow or Wednesday?
Yeah.
I'll call her in the morning either way.
Yeah.
And see if I can get some better clarity. Because I presume what the state is not saying in this letter is if you tell Ms. Kabaki that we can't get you a resolution by July 1st, that her answer, her response is going to be, well, when's your next meeting in July?
When is your special meeting scheduled?
Yeah. Or if you don't want to call that, you know, we say, okay, well, our regular meeting in July is July 25th, is that a problem? She may say, no big deal, just adopt it on July 25th. But I think saying, oh, we're going to adopt that at the second meeting in October, I think they're probably going to say, well, that's not.
It'll be too late.
That's not the intention.
But I hope she would also tell us, well, that's not a problem, but we are having a meeting on July 15th
Right.
to give the first round of lollipops out to all the distressed units or whatever.
Yeah.
They're, I, I mean, they're, they're clearly not giving us much notice about their process as evidenced by this letter on June 21st, that says we have to make this decision, so.
Right. And we're all on new terrain again.
Right.
Well, therefore, would it be wise to, to go ahead and say that that, that tomorrow or shortly after tomorrow, you will call this woman and ask her the questions that we've discussed tonight? And then if and, and then call a special meeting at which we would be able to know the answers to the questions
Yeah.
with, i- in, in order to make the resolution truly be something that, that gives us the opportunity to know what we're doing.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think what I could do, I can call Ms. Kabaki. She was very responsive today when I emailed her, so hopefully she'll be as responsive over the phone perhaps. And be able to have some of these questions answered and reconciled. And what that special meeting would be, and it'd probably be, you know, 15 minutes, is me simply saying, you know, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, here's what I have to report back, provide a briefing on that, I can take this resolution, adopt, you know, adjust it for our normal resolution form. If the board wants to adopt it then, you may. Maybe information that you receive, you say, nope, not interested, see you next year. And if nothing else, you know, we're out maybe, you know, 15 to minutes to half an hour. And if nothing else, you know, we're out maybe, you know, 15 to minutes to half an hour during the day, I think, if that's if that's amenable to y'all.
It's good.
Is there, is there a a day of preference, Wednesday or Thursday? Friday is the first, so it's gotta be Wednesday or Thursday.
I mean, are we saying evening or?
Oh, yeah. I've gotta get 48 hours notice, so it'd have to be Thursday.
Yeah, let's do Thursday.
Thursday evening?
That's my preference, but does that leave you sufficient time?
Yeah, I mean, I hope so.
And hopefully, Ms. Kabaki.
Well,
yeah, hopefully. Email on Friday.
Whether she is or not, I'll have record of that being.
There you go.
Yeah, but hopefully they'll work with us on answering th- these questions so that we can meet this deadline.
And if not, get the answers in advance, then.
Well, when I emailed her today about it, she said she'd be happy to answer the questions I had.
Okay.
So I've already, we've already primed that up and.
I understand they wanna be very present and very helpful
Yeah.
with this program.
And if we had to, on Thursday, we could say, we intend to do this, and we need to do whatever before a resolution and have a different date for that.
Yeah.
You know, if we needed to do that.
Yeah.
Waiting on answers.
Commissioner Farrell, I've noticed you've not really spoken up a lot about this subject and.
I'll still be kind of debating on the second, the numbers two point here. You know, what's best for the board's final. So it's kind of like a lot of things we did put it off another year. He's not the same.
I can see.
I don't know why you put them two in there really, and then pushing for July 1st so much.
Right.
Well, yeah, I think that that in in the first year they tried this, again, there was no funding. They couldn't offer you anything for this designation. But now that we have the ARPA funds, and it's for this year and this year only, there is something that we can get out of this designation. And so the whole exercise is more meaningful. Number one, sorting through all the utilities in the state to find the ones that are in jeopardy. We made that cut marginally. And so number two, if we choose to submit to this program, then I think we'll get assistance to get ourselves back to a point where we can be called a viable utility.
And this would be a grant that would.
It'll open the door to a series of grant opportunities.
That's the only reason I could.
It reduces competition in some of the funding streams that we're trying to get right now on some projects.
I'd like to accept it, but I have no problem with it personally.
I mean, that's the only reason I can thank you for this short suspense that they're giving us, is they're realizing they have a bucket of money that they need to start doing something with. And so there's a, there's an incentive to doing this, which typically doesn't make any sense. Typically, you would delay it as long as you could, even if you know it's coming.
Every elected official in North Carolina would try not to have this on their, you know, CV. So there there certainly, there has to be some advantage to self-designating. And as Commissioner Bond said, this program was only adopted in 2020. So it's not, you know, a far-reaching, in terms of history, kind of viable utility program. But they, they, I think what exposed a lot of utilities through COVID was some of that revenue stream, particularly on the industry side, where they really ran into some challenges there. One option that Mr. Messick just offered too, is we do have the ability, and obviously I would recommend that we go through the rest of the agenda. We do have the ability to recess this meeting to any, any date or time without having to go through the notice provisions of the 48 hours for a special meeting. So obviously, we're on, we're on public record right now, and we would try to put something out through Colby and such, either way. But if we wanted to have it sooner, we can recess, but it has to be obviously to a defined date and time as of right now.
I, I think the public notice is
Yeah.
more clear.
I think it feels more, more clear and straightforward to call in for 48 hours in advance of a special meeting on Thursday.
Do we know what time that is? Because I'll have to have that out by probably noon tomorrow.
Six o'clock.
How does that work for everyone?
Are we, well, are we saying virtual or?
I would say so.
Okay.
I'd say we just call a Zoom meeting from wherever you're at, log on. Similar to when we adopted the budget last year.
Yeah, I'm wide open.
Good. Five or six, if four is wanted.
Yeah.
Four is good with me, if that's, and I know it's better.
This is a Zoom, I can do Zoom anyway. You know, I'm being worked, Jay.
Before, I mean.
I've seen three of you, honest.
Four, four is your preference, Jay?
Oh, I'm fine anytime, not wasted.
I prefer that for staff, four o'clock.
Yeah, well, again, I'm not expecting it to be, you know, extended.
No, I know you could be home too, or whoever, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. We'll do 4:00 PM on the 30th? Yeah.
Yeah.
And then it would be via Zoom, so we'll send everybody.
We'll send all Zoom.
Panel's invite to 10.
So.
I would say, Madam Mayor, I think I have everything I need unless there's other comments.
Well, I'll say, can we, can we go over like what the questions are that we want? Answer to clarifications that we want, just to be clear what those are that we're looking for?
Well, the, the questions that I have, both from my own and of the board is, you know, are there any explanations to some of the designation, you know, some of the accounting function? You know, how quickly are we, if we designate, how quickly are we off the designation? You know, how is that remedied out? I don't know, whatever. Those are the primary ones of like, how do we get in this? For one, that's kind of the nuanced clarification.
Yeah.
And then how do you get out of?
Well, and specifically transfers in and out.
Right.
And what was the other? Said? I thought there was another, like, those points out of the 11 points, we know why we got four of them.
Yeah.
I think we know why we probably got seven of them or something, so.
Right. Well, there's some, you know, and there's a, there's a factor where it's, you know, depreciation. So our system shows us old, so we get a, we get flagged for that because we depreciated most of our system. You know, that that's pretty obvious, but kind of odd, in my opinion. I guess it's a, it's a, it's an indicator of old system.
That we're not improving it.
Right. But they also have one, a population density measured as service population divided by miles of water line. They have that for water and sewer. We got dinged on that. So there's probably some clarification there. So if it, if it serves a greater purpose in a more succinct manner, I'll probably just ask for greater detail on each of the points that we got flagged on.
Okay.
And I think part of that too, of understanding, if the state knew we were merging the system, if the state knew that we had raised rates over the last, over the current fiscal year and the proposed fiscal year coming up on July 1st, would that have factored in? It may not affect our willingness to accept the designation, but I think it would provide greater clarity of, had we not chosen to go forward with the designation, if that's our choice, would we, would alleviate the designation we're looking for?
And then I think the other question too is, is there another deadline after July 1st? If, you know, if we can't do it by July 1st, or we don't want to do it by July 1st, what's, what's the next deadline, actual deadline, and what is that for?
And also, I'm curious about the value viable utility programs perspectives on the work that we have already done, specifically the CIP, whether or not that counts as the infrastructure assessment requirement. And the historic rate study done in 2018, again, I, I don't hold it up because I think that it was flawed, but.
I think the CIP would probably give us some, some value. The rate study, the reason they want you to do that is so that when you don't raise your rates to according to that rate study, they're gonna tell you that you didn't do it.
Right. That's what. So it needs to be refreshed.
Oh, absolutely. That's what happens when the LGC comes in.
Yeah.
I mean, if you, if you look at the, the information that UNC did in 2015 of our rate study, and even with the rates that we proposed over the last two years, where we thought we were gonna be in what UNC said we should be in fiscal year 20, which was two years ago now, we're not even there, even with the rate increase within the last two years. So different than that original rate that you're referring to in 2018, but that, that's that lever that the LGC wants to say is that you said these are the rates required, and you didn't do it. So we're gonna ding you again if you don't do that. So I don't think they would use that 2018 number. They wanna see a fresh number on that one, I'm sure.
If Ms. Kabaki has time, and you have time to ask her, it might be interesting to learn how many such potential designation letters went out. And how much of the ARPA funds are available to be awarded now and then in the fall round? And, and what, what, what would be the financial impacts of proceeding with the merger?
I suppose in a sense, the ultimate question is, are there any drawbacks?
Yes.
Besides just having sort of an ugly word attached to us. But I'm not sure that Mrs. Kabaki could. I don't know where she is in the food chain, so I don't know whether she would be able to say that's gonna be a real problem for you when it comes time to do X or Y.
But they work with the LGC. And so as one potential source of possible repercute, negative repercussions, the LGC should be aware and have informed them.
Yeah.
If there are any drawbacks to this.
As, as best I know, and again, I'm not fully savvy on it yet, but the it seems more of a political demerit in many ways. And just, you know, you gotta do a rate study. You can't maybe do a rate study. They compel you to do. They compel you to do training and education. I think those are the punitive steps of this that make it undesirable. Because all of us are busy. You know, we don't wanna do, take a, you know, a day out of our schedule to go to probably Raleigh, even though it's a lot closer to us than these others, to go sit in a training to do stuff. It's like, well, I feel like I'm already pretty well informed about that. But if we're in this situation, perhaps we're not as informed as we want to be, or wish to be. So I, I think those are probably the steps, but I can certainly ask that question that she, again, I suspect that others have had that similar question to her as well. Because if there wasn't, if it was too punitive, nobody would volunteer to do it. I don't care what amount of money's there. Nobody would volunteer to do it.
Chris, is it a, I notice, is it a possibility that this distressed? Whatever, is this like, could be an application for to get this money? Could it be like the first step that you have to be a distressed municipality before you can even apply for this money? Is there a possibility that that's why we're in this distress? That, that we might be getting some of this money?
Correct. You know, the way that works, you know, we submit, you know, we, we sent five applications into the SRF funding cycle for the May 2nd deadline. When we submit those into the state, state reviews application, Town of Pittsburgh, okay, that pile. Town of Pittsburgh distressed utility, oh. Whether that's to make them aware of saying, hey, you did a rate study. We gave your board education and your staff education, and you can't hack it. You need to merge or do something different with this. That's the whole point of creating a viable utility, is just kind of bringing that to life.
That's right.
Again, this board is unique. Y'all talk about utilities more than probably any other board in this state combined, to be honest, in many ways. So y'all are much more informed about it in opening conversation about it than most people are. It doesn't mean that every decision we've made has always been perfect. But we do talk about it more than most boards do.
Yeah, I was kind of sitting there and just running through, I said, how can this lady be in Raleigh and not know Pittsburgh is not distressed with?
She's, she's the one who basically has been holding the Sanford Forceman or Paul.
Oh, man.
Same lady.
I hope she didn't hear that, sorry.
I mean, it seems like it might be an opportunity for varsity team to play in the JV league for a little bit.
Yeah.
Or maybe we're JV and playing in the freshman league or something.
You know, if you watch Premier League soccer, there's a relegation where you can make your way back to it after a while, so. Yeah, I, I'll get some more facts about it and get these questions. I've got eight of them listed here. There might be some over the next couple of days. If you think something, let me know. I'm gonna call her first thing in the morning and try to get some response quicker than not, because I wanna give her proper time to respond. She may not be able to rattle off answers to me.
Sure.
We'll go ahead. We'll get a meeting set up for four o'clock on Thursday 30th. We'll do it via Zoom. I'll work with Ms. Kabaki or anybody at the state she may recommend me to, to get our questions answered, and I'll bring a Pittsburgh-looking resolution, just in case, and we'll go from there.
I think obviously, anything you can distribute ahead of time is good.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna say for the record that I'll sit in a classroom for four hours for particular million dollars or what?
For 4.6 million, I'll go to a class every day. Don't bring, give me a check.
All right. Are we ready to go to the next item then?
I'll make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Okay.
Second.
All right.
For sake of, um. Our own personal marital situations and things like that. I was wondering if we could go on to, uh, number four under miscellaneous.
Yes.
I, I'm not sure the context behind that, but sure, we can. Uh, and, and Madam Mayor, this is, uh, and for the board, this is a, uh, an item that I put here. Um, last meeting, we had a conversation about bonus allocation. I spoke to Mr. Bonnison in between. Um, and there's, there may be more information to come, but I did want, we talked about, you know, resolution of the board and some of the res. Some of the conversation about bonus allocation, uh, that's the NC DOT function through statute, uh, with the development of Chatham Parkway. So I just provided the really regurgitation of the, of a resolution that was provided or adopted by the board on August 20th of 2020. Um, so, uh, if there's, if there's other lacking information or more information sought by the board. Um, happy to respond to that, but that's all, that's all my intent that this was, was to kind of bring this back into the public sector of it. Um, and since, since we did have that conversation at last meeting.
Great. Are there questions that need to still be answered regarding this or additional information needed? Oh, okay.
Uh, just, just that Chris and I have spoken, I'm going to send him a couple of things, a reminder of the. The letter from 2018. That you'll remember, Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, and Commissioner Baldwin and Commissioner Farrell, you'll remember conversation in, uh. It was actually at the November 26th town board meeting. I was absent from that meeting. And I understood that, uh, the board was not comfortable in agreeing with the particular letter from Mr. Smith. Uh, and instead instructed the manager to send a letter of agreement. Of qualified support for the, uh, Chatham Parkway project. With the statement in the letter that agreement would still be forthcoming or wrought later. Uh, agreement would be reached later regarding the bonus allocation. So. Those documents are there.
That was 2018, November 26th, 2018?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, uh, Mr. Kennedy was not able to find them. Uh, I'm, I'm glad to enlighten him and I'll do so and CC the board.
Very good then. Uh, our fifth and final matter under miscellaneous two is consideration of. Future zoning, zoning map amendment requests and, um. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Madam Mayor, with this one, obviously the last meeting, we had a couple of rezoning requests and, and. In the processing and review of those, there was, um, I think some, some consternation from the board. Um, I think that's the appropriate way to put that of. We understand that, that with water and sewer being where it is in terms of our capacities, understanding that we are, um, uh. Beginning the process of undergoing a future land use plan, uh, revision. Uh, that we hope to have, you know, again, adopted into this board by the end of this calendar year. Um, of, of how should we proceed forward with rezoning requests? You know, should we even entertain these types of things? Um, I think it would be, uh, my recommendation, I think Mr. Messick would agree with me that it's probably not appropriate. Um, or, uh, perhaps even relevant to do some sort of moratorium against rezonings. Those are generally associated with permits. Um, and, and a rezoning is more of a perpetual, uh, document. Um, or, or finding of the board. Um, and so, you know, unlike. If you do a moratorium against, you know, sewer allocations, you can do that. If you want to do one against zoning compliance permits, I think you can do that, that don't trigger other things that you perhaps are worried about. Um, rezonings being legislative items, you can just simply deny them if you don't want them. And I would, I would generally encourage the board to do that regardless of the situation. If you don't like it, you can deny it. Um, but there, there will likely be something that you want to look at. Um, for instance, we talked a lot about tonight about Dan Deacon's property. If he came forward with a rezoning for that and said, hey, I can't do this because of such and such. If we have a moratorium, if, if there was one even allowed for that. Then that would prohibit us from even reviewing that for something that we may be agreeable to without ending the overall moratorium. So I think the, um, general conversation and, and advice from, from staff would be. I think we, we very much understand and appreciate, I think, the intent about saying, what should we do with, with rezonings? Um, and I, I appreciate a lot of the intent from, from the board because I think predominance amount of it is, is trying to save staff time. Of saying, we don't want to waste staff's time with this. And if we know that we're pretty confident, we're not, it'd have to be, you know, blow our socks off type of rezoning to try to approve something right now. Cause we're going through a period of transition that we don't want to burden the planning staff with another entitlement application to look at a rezoning. Um, and, and so sincerely, I mean, that's, that's, that's a great thing. But I can't ask more from the board about that than considering my staff, um, and, and their time. So. Um, but with that, I think that for the number of applications we get, you know, fewer than, than five a year, um, pretty much on average. You know, that, that I would say unless something gets unwieldy with it. I think staff's, uh, response right now is we're okay to process them. Now, I. Don't confuse the fact that our staff is very much listening to this conversation. And when they talk to applicants and applicants, we can refer them back to these conversations and say, hey, the board is not really keen on rezonings right now. You may not want to, you know, use your, utilize your time in this manner, you know, there's probably a better time looking forward or. Tell you what, you know, landowner developer, how about you engage with us in our future land use plan? You know, development and let's talk about that. Cause if it's a good, if it's a good idea and the board wants to rezon it. Then why not help us with the future land use and help it make that mesh from the outset? So I think we can find a way to channel that energy of anyone who wishes to rezon property. Um, without the board having to take a formal stance, um, for or against it. And so. Uh, for the purpose of this evening, it was really to kind of have a, again, it's information item, discussion item only. No, no actions being requested. Um, of the board, but, but to give you a platform in a forum to discuss it. Um, and you may not have anything discussed tonight. That's okay. But I, I think staff wanted to offer our. Our input to say, I, I don't think a moratorium would, would necessarily be an option. And I think with the legislative aspect of it, you have the ability to, to pick what you want and deny what you want. Um, I don't know if Mr. Messick has anything to add to that.
You all taking note, you know, fair and reasonable and not arbitrary. To say you just flat out, you're not. Ready to get an inferior down, it's pretty arbitrary. There is a lot of thinking and more noise, but not with these. You don't think it's appropriate, um, and you should say no.
No, I, I appreciate that. I mean, I'm the one that, uh, brought up the idea of a moratorium among us, you know? Since we're doing politically unpopular things these days, but, um. At, in, in a lot of that was based on, you know, a desire for fairness really in that we, you know, I think it is important. The future land use plan update and not rezoning generally, I guess, while we, we have that in process. But, um, you know, it's a fair point you bring up about, you know, we've got a lot of conditional zonies out there because of the status. And so there's needs to be a tweet to one of those or, um, there's probably other circumstances that are to. To codify specifically what those would be. Um, but we have that latitude. Obviously. People are hearing, staff are hearing. I hope, I hope staff is, is talking about this conversation or previous conversations at pre-application meetings. Uh.
Absolutely.
And I'm sure they are.
And, and that's really where planning staff, I think, is not oftentimes highlighted as well. I think that's kind of an unseen aspect and really what makes, you know, you know, just planners. And great planners. I think great planners as, as staff being conduits between an applicant who has a specific idea. That's reviewed through a generic code and then provided to each of you to create policy. Now, if a special use permit, you're not creating policy, you're affirming policy. But, uh, but, but a rezoning, you are creating policy. That's, that's why it's a legislative action. And so trying to go through that, that framework to create that policy. Staff is a, is a great shepherd for that. And, and those conversations that we have with the board. And, you know, I hope our planning staff is taking this in, okay. All right. When this comes up and I'm speaking to so and so, I'm going to impart that context. And, you know, having the pulse of the board is very helpful for myself, very helpful for our planning staff. As we have conversations with developers and any other applicant, um, that we try to represent y'all because y'all represent the people. Um, and so that's very important. Uh, since I think these conversations are good and. I, I think that we can find a, a probably a way to channel that energy into some production there, even if it's not a, a formal rezoning application.
I appreciate the conversation.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Anything further on that matter? Well, uh, we usually close our meetings by going around the table and having, um. An opportunity to talk about concerns. Um. We didn't really do very much of that at the beginning of our meeting today. But, um, Commissioner Farrell, do you have anything on your mind?
No, ma'am. Do not.
Commissioner Shipp?
No, I said at the beginning.
Uh, no, thank you.
Pass.
Okay. Well, in that case, I will express some, um, tongue in cheek concern. Mr. Messick, I was hoping that you could, um, advise us on the legality of accepting this gift from. A major developer in our county. Um, you know. All of us remember, all of us remember that the very first thing we learned in our ethics class. Was. Was, uh. Was, don't ever, you know, don't let anybody buy you the turkey sandwich for lunch because. You don't want to have the reputation of being bought off by the lowly turkey sandwich. And so.
And, and I cost more than a turkey sandwich.
Oh dear. Anyway, granted tongue in cheek. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
And although it's not required. Is, is there a second to?
I'd love to.
Those in favor, please stand. Take your honey.